Roll call.
Yes. Mr. Bural Patel.
He's absent and he'll be here in a little while.
Ms. Pang?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Mr. Rivera will be late.
Noted. Mr. Vishal Patel. Ms. Anjana Patel?
Here.
Mr. Lugo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Toth.
Right now, the Board wishes to go to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA Section 10:4-12, Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following: confidential personal matters, confidential board matters, and confidential student matters. The Board anticipates being away for approximately one hour. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Be back in one hour. Bang it down, please.
Thank you.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Toth.
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is John Toth. I'm the School Business Administrator. I have a statement on behalf of the Board President, Mr. Bureau Patel.
Sorry, excuse me. We have to get out of Zach first.
Oh, correct. Correct. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We need a motion to reopen the meeting.
Motion to reopen.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Romano, second by Mr. Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now, we're back to our live public meeting. Again, like I said, my name is John Toth. I'm the School Business Administrator. I have a statement from the Board President, Mr. Bureau Patel, that I'd like to read. There are quite a few attendees in our meeting this evening, and it's the Board's desire that every attendee is able to see and hear the business of the Board. As such, if you have signs, please stand along the side or the back so that no one sitting in the audience will have their vision blocked. Further, the Board records its meetings. If an individual in the audience wishes to record the meeting, please be courteous to other attendees and record from the side or the back of the seating area, or keep your device low as to not impede the view of the dais. Not only does the Board want the audience to see the dais, but the Board wants to ensure that every attendee can hear the Board's business. Therefore, we request proper decorum during the meeting. Please do not shout or disrupt the proceedings of the Board. In this way, we will have a productive session. The Board anticipates significant public comments tonight. To accommodate as many speakers as possible, the Board will not be answering any questions during each speaker's time. As public comment is each individual's right to address the Board and not time for a back-and-forth discussion, we ask you to use your time and the microphone wisely. The Board staff will be writing down any questions of individual speakers. At the end of public comment, the Superintendent will, when feasible, answer any questions. Those questions which need to be researched will be responded to in writing and published in a new tab on the district website. In this way, all interested people can obtain the information which may be relevant to them, including those who are not able to be present at the meeting this evening. Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Eddie Alderelli, Superintendent of Schools here in Edison Township. Just a couple of opening remarks. I know that, and I understand, that many of you are here this evening in regard to a complaint that the Board of Education members received, as well as some content that has been posted on social media. I can assure you, from the Board of Education's perspective and our perspective, we take matters like this seriously. We are, we have immediately launched an investigation. Due to the confidential nature of all personnel matters, myself or any of our Board of Education members cannot and will not discuss publicly any details or actions. I do thank you for your understanding in this capacity and in relationship to the remarks that Mr. Toth just raised as well, too. We're looking forward to a productive meeting. I do have some other comments in relationship to this evening as well, too. You know, in just over a month, school's going to be open. We're going to be opening our doors to our students and staff. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the individuals that make this possible. There's a lot of work that goes on in the summertime, a lot of planning behind the scenes. First and foremost is our custodial staff that makes the schools shine, that beautifies them. They work hard. We have an unbelievable summer school program that our custodial staff works around and then has a short window of time to get things ready for teachers to move in, get their classrooms prepared. We have a tremendous amount of construction projects that are going on as well. So, we are thankful for the work of our facilities department. They are doing an unbelievable job in managing those pieces. We have a transportation department that hasn't stopped working either. We are busing a tremendous number of students over the course of this past summer in relationship to our extended school year program. And our secretarial staff are busy fielding phone calls as we prepare for the start of school. I would be remiss if I did not say that our building level and our district level leaders are working tirelessly. We have so many curricular initiatives that we're going to be moving forward this year that is going to be for the betterment of our students. Our building level leadership really get excited and pumped up for the opening day of school. It is an honor and a privilege to work alongside this group of people each and every day. It really makes my job easier in this capacity, and I'm inspired by their commitment to our students and our community. And I am just really looking forward to a positive 2024, 2025 school year. Just a quick note on transportation, which is always a hot topic at this time of year. A quick update, we have about five schools that are left to place for subscription bussing. Mr. Ghian, as well as his staff, are in the process of doing it. Subscription bussing is done on a first-come, first-served basis, so they will take those applications in the order that they arrive. And if you have, so I want to make sure I get this right, if you have a payment listed in your portal, so if you've been selected, fortunate I've been selected, and you have a payment listed in your portal, please pay that immediately because there is a seven-day turnaround timeframe in order for you to do so. So, if you are, if you've applied for subscription bussing, been awarded subscription bussing, you should have received an email about that, and you'll be able to pay within a seven-day timeframe. If you have any questions in relationship to that, please don't hesitate to utilize our help desk because we'll be able to answer any questions that you have. If you are eligible and one of those five schools that have not been selected, you will be receiving correspondence shortly. So, please be patient in that. We are hoping to have all of these done in those five schools within the next two weeks. And as always, we will reopen subscription bussing in October for those that had missed the deadline during the last school year. And then, lastly, Mr. Ghian wanted me to inform everybody that bus passes should be coming out within the next few weeks, and all eligible students who are eligible for transportation should be on the lookout for that. I just want to kind of foreshadow a few upcoming meetings. Our August meeting, we're going to have a couple of presentations. We will have the first unveiling, hopefully, of our strategic plan. We're going to provide the Board of Education members with the details in relationship to the action plan within the next couple of days. We are set to have like a rehearsal with the advisory team, which was members of the community, parents, students, teachers, administrators, all were part of this large group that are really going to set our district on a track for success. And the way to do that, especially when you're looking at a long-term vision, is to put that down in writing. And those documents are fluid, right? So, as you create these plans and you look at the feasibility of it in relationship to funding, sometimes you have to adjust and pivot. So, I look forward to working collaboratively with the Board of Education, as well as our community members, to ensure a successful plan. So, the Board will be able to take a look at the strategic planning process in the capacity. You'll have more than enough time to take a look at that so that our presentation in August will hopefully be beneficial. And last but not least, we'll also have a second presentation in our commitment to transparency in our communication. We are working on a rebranding and a redevelopment of our appearance, not only on social media, but also from a district website perspective. So, we're launching our district website in August. It's going to have some really, really great features. I know there's an app that's also along, launched with that. We have content that is going to be up-to-date and accurate as well, too. I'm not sure if I can say that about our current website, if I'm fully being honest, right, Ms. Daniel? Yep. And so, those are a lot of things that we kind of inherited, that we're working towards making sure that we hit the ground running in September. So, Ms. Daniel is going to be doing a brief presentation on that for the entire Board, as well as the members of the community at that time. And Mr. Romano, Mr. Vice President, that concludes my Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Right now, it's a public comment on the resolutions only. That's public comment on the resolutions only.
We need a motion, second.
Second, the motion.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romano. Second, Mr. Schneider.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will ask one more time. Public comments on the resolutions only.
Seeing none.
See none. Close public comment.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Personnel report.
Motion, second.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Vishal Patel, second by Vice President Romano. Mr. Lugo? Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes, with the exception of any known conflicts, please. I recuse myself on those.
Noted. Ms. White?
Yes, with the exception of any known conflicts.
Noted. Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the administrative curriculum, instruction, and special services.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schneider, second by Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
A motion to approve finance.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vishal Patel, second by Mr. Schneider. Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we have the committee reports. Mr. Schneider?
Yes. So, I'm giving this report in place of Chairperson Brian Rivera, who is Chairperson of the Policy Committee. On June 20th, we had a Policy Committee meeting. The attendees were Bureau Patel, Brian Rivera, Christopher Haas, myself, Dr. Alderelli, Heather Daniel, Dr. Tuie, and Vishal Patel. The Policy Committee met on June 20th, 2024. During the meeting, the Committee reviewed over 20 policies as a result of an audit that was ordered by the Superintendent of Schools and conducted by the company Strauss S. May. The Committee reviewed all suggested revisions and updates from the audit and discussed its contents. There's still many more policies to revisit as the audit was quite extensive. The Committee tasked the Superintendent with providing a synopsis of the changes to policies. The Committee sought the input of one of the attorneys from Inglisino and Taylor, who are one of our Board Attorneys, and we requested that they provide insight into the various discussions and concerns raised from community members regarding Policy 5756. The attorney explained the intent of the policy, as well as the Board's options for revisions or abolishment. The Committee tasked the attorney with providing the Board with a detailed outline of their options. The Committee will reconvene in the upcoming month to discuss this policy with further detail and the attorney's report. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Romano.
Thank you. We have special ed.
Mr. Romano? Can I add just more details that was discussed in the Policy Committee meeting, just for full transparency of public?
Sure.
I just want to give more details about the Policy Committee. So, as Mr. Schneider said, the attorney gave us options that we can explore. The three options that was given to us, one was to keep the policy as it is because there are existing lawsuits that has been going on by the state on other school districts that tried to modify the policy and vet it out, what happens to them, and then follow the trend. Second was to abolish the policy, which creates inconsistency for administration in terms of following the guidelines and policies in case some incident were to happen. And third one was to modify the policy, which can lead us to the lawsuit and more consequences. And those are the options that attorney is going to do some more research and come back to us with detailed analysis of those options, advantages and disadvantages of those options. So, we will provide you more updates, you know, when we have the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We have special ed. You can do that.
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Vice President Romano. I can read the preschool and special education report. So, the Committee discussed preschool expansion in attendance at this meeting where Mr. Romano, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Pang, Ms. Daniel, myself, and Dr. Tuie. We discussed preschool expansion, as well as our alternate school program, our Edison Success Academy, the PEA grant, things along those lines. The preschool expansion aid program is on track to provide full-day program to roughly 600 students, grades three and four-year-olds, beginning in the fall. Students have been identified and selected. Families have been notified of their locations. All of this has transpired over the course of the last couple of months. Transportation's currently working on the routes, which will be available to parents through the Genesis Portal in August. Our Edison Success Academy is currently under revision right now. Some of the infrastructure there is getting modified. We have some roof repair, as well as some ceiling work to get on. We're really looking forward to the start of this program. That's going to be headed up by Ms. Meredith Quick in concert with Ms. Kate Gaussman, Rick Cohen, and Dr. Tuie's team as well. We have students that have been applied and has also been accepted at that timeframe, and will be opening doors on the first day of school. Dr. Tuie will be presenting about both of these programs during an upcoming Board of Education meeting. And that concludes that report. Mr. Romano, if I could just add one more thing that I forgot to mention in the Superintendent's remarks? Two things. Number one, I would be remiss if I did not mention that we actually hired, the Board just hired a vice principal here at James Monroe Elementary School. I don't know if they're still in the audience right now, and it's probably my fault because I told him to come and that I was going to publicly congratulate him. But, Mr. Fu, why don't we get him? Why don't we get him? And why don't we give him a big round of applause when he comes on? And his name is Arjas Hurstoffus. He is the current Athletic Director at J.P. Stevens High School, who has now graciously accepted the position with the Board's approval as the Assistant Principal here at James Monroe Elementary School. We are extremely excited to have him here. He is going to do a great job. He did a wonderful job as the Athletic Director. It will be big shoes to fill. I have informed the Board of Education about a transition plan in relationship to this. We are probably most likely hiring an interim in this capacity until we find someone that can fill Mr. Hurstoffus's shoes. Secondly, while we're waiting for him to come back, I do want to acknowledge one member of our Cabinet Team right here that has put in his retirement. The Board and myself have reluctantly accepted it, and his name is Ralph Barca. Ralph is our Chief Tech, is Ralph here? He should be. Okay, so everybody left then, right? Okay, that's great.
Nice.
Didn't want the accolades.
That's it, didn't want the accolades. All right, everybody, round of applause. This is, this is the new Assistant Principal at James Monroe Elementary School. I don't know if you want to come up and say maybe 30 seconds of words? Perfect.
Excuse me, everybody. I'd like to thank the Hiring Committee. I'd like to thank the Central Office Administration and the Board of Ed for the vote of confidence in me. I am officially an owl, and I look forward to our first day of school. Have a great night.
Excellent. Fantastic. And is Mr. Barca in the building? Anyway, Mr. Barca, our Chief Technology Officer, a member of our Cabinet Team, he's walking in right now, too. Don't clap for him. Don't clap for him. He's leaving me. Ralph, I can say this with the fullest sincerity. It has been an absolute pleasure and privilege, my privilege, to work alongside of you. You have been instrumental in my transition to this position. These will be tremendous shoes to fill, and I think I speak for everybody in the room, including the employees who you directly supervise, that you will be greatly missed. I will tell you, I did read your, reluctantly, your letter of retirement over the weekend, and I do thank you for your heartfelt words, and I have copies to share with the Board as well, too, because it really summarizes what Ralph is as a person, as well as his commitment to Edison Township. So, Ralph, thank you so much. Best of luck in your future endeavors. Thank you, Mr. Romano. I'm sorry about that. I went out of order. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I get all confused. Board member comments. Board member comments. Seeing none? Now, it's public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Could we get a motion to?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
That was quick. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Once again, public comments. Sir?
Comments on anything or just some specific topic?
No, this is, this is time for public comment on any Board business.
Anything? Anything? Yeah.
Okay. Who would like to start? Ma'am, please. Come up to the podium. Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, thank you, and thank you very much. My name is Kim Lindley. I'm a former special education teacher, and a mother and a taxpayer. So, today, I'm here to revisit 5756, and this morning, this evening, I want to thank you for your valuable time and invest and interest in our precious jewels, as it says in the Bible. And our children's academic and safety is a tremendous responsibility. Tonight, I would like to revisit the Policy 5756. Policy 5756 is only a piece of a puzzle with tremendous ramifications that will not only affect our children, but our society as well. Due to the gravity of this suggested policy and time constraints, I would like to address few key points to consider while repealing the suggested Policy 5756. This policy gives a child the authority to make complex decisions, even though their brain development is not fully developed. The Mental Health Daily report states that the brain is not fully developed between 25 to 30 years old. The prefrontal cortex doesn't start developing until 13 years of age, where their hormones and identity are starting to develop. My concern with this is that an elementary school teacher, as a school teacher as well, that their most important people in their life are their parents and their teachers. How can a child of five be given that responsibility? It's very easy to direct. My concern as well, I'm going off tangent a little bit, is that they're becoming, living double lives because a teacher does not have to tell the parent by the laws of that suggested policy. And I don't understand it because their mind is, even at 13, at 22, I have a 28-year-old still trying to figure out life. How can we put that into the child's hands? It doesn't make any sense to me. And as a teacher, I love those students that I taught, but my kids are my kids. They were not my children when I was in school, and I gave them gladly to their parents, and I treated them like, I didn't think twice about having a code blue or a code white because that's what I did. It was my career. It was a passion. My other thing that I absolutely listened to was that there is this movie called Art Clip. Two parents had their children, 13 years old. She went into school, it was with COVID, it also had to do with their removing, and that the child was brought into her room with three adults, a social worker, a principal, and also, I forgot the other one, maybe a social worker. And they were able to have that child, any child that's surrounded by adults can be easily guided into their section. It doesn't make sense, you know, and having a separate file and send down to the state of New Jersey? How can that be? I mean, as your, is your job, your academics come first, safety second, well, actually combination, you know? And I don't understand how we can just let that go. What it really causes is a distraction, a division between the parents and the schools. You know, I don't understand, you know? And I'm, right now, I'm glad in a way that I'm teaching, but I miss it because it was, this is a hard thing to do for someone to speak up, to have your teacher speak up, any teacher speak up because they're afraid of losing their job. It's not easy. However, you know, life's not easy. We're given one life, and at the end of that life, we do have to meet a God. But our children are our responsibility. And like the hormones, how in the world? I mean, I understand being lawsuits, but you're also being, people are also being sued by these parents and speaking up. You know, if we don't speak now, who's going to speak for them? And it's just the beginning. And another thing that I wanted to bring up is that really, the purpose of an educator is to teach and inspire learning. We are not equipped to have a child and to have their emotional issues brought to our attention. We're supposed to be working on their academics. We had social workers, psychologists, and when you had an IEP with a student, with a student with challenges or whatever needs, they were our 504. That parent is involved in that. It's a legal document with the parent's concern. Where does that, who came up with that idea to not include a parent? And the social worker ends up being the person, the mediator for that parent if the parents aren't supportive. I mean, really, if you go through this whole document, the 5756, there's just so much in there. It's a really hard position for everybody to be in, but if we don't speak up for our children, who will? You know, my child had issues, had challenges. I spoke up, and I was so very grateful and glad that God gave me that position to be a special ed teacher, that I was able to speak up for her. I did not want to be doing that, but she had needs. She can make up her mind, you know? So, really, you send them to school. I sent my kids to school figuring everybody's on the same page, but we were, apparently, as the time goes on. You know, and as far as the bullying and the H.I.B., that's what we were there for. So, as far as those children, what about the cisgender children? Who's speaking up for them? You know, what do they feel like? And parents, some parents can't speak up because they're afraid, I understand. But really, I mean, at the end of the day, we all have to go to bed. I told my children that as they grow older, you have to put your head on the pillow at night, and as long as you can sleep well, you know, the decisions that you make, you make the best that you can. But with this information, it's just unbelievable.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the flip-flop, but thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Next, for public comments. Next, we jump.
My name is Mohammed Ahmed. I have two kids at Edison High School.
You can recognize with your address as well.
Okay. 13 Scholar Drive.
You're recognized.
Okay. I have two kids attending Edison High School. I have two other kids in the Edison Public Schools. I saw Ms. Tafaro here earlier. She's known me for 11 years. She knows my family. I know her. I saw Mr. Ross Walken, incredible person, incredible principal. I saw Mr. Ross Walken, incredible person, incredible principal. I think you guys know why we're here, you know, I'm here because yesterday my daughter brought to me a link, and I had a recording of Nicole, I think her last name is Himmelstein, talking to students in the MSA, in the Muslim Students Association at Edison High School, and she threatens them. She threatens to call the colleges that they got into, right, and have those things revoked, right, essentially. I ask every single one of you up here, especially the minorities, decades before, you guys would not be at these tables, right? There are things, I don't expect everybody to understand what we, what our children go through, but the minorities, I know you do, and you're at this table, you have power, right? Be just. I'm not asking you to do anything special, just do what you would do for your children. Be just, okay? In the beginning of this, everybody here stood up, you guys turned around, and you pleasured allegiance to the flag, and you ended it with liberty and justice for all. Be just, do the right thing. Mr. Alderelli, you're at the top, right? So I expect you to be transparent, be accountable to the community, do what is right. Many of us, we're not just minorities on one level, we're ethnic minorities, we're racial minorities, we're religious minorities, and anything else that comes, right? And so I don't expect everybody to understand that, but our children are sent to your schools to be empowered. They're not sent there to be made small, to be threatened. There was a time when my parents' generation, my parents didn't come to parent-teacher conferences because they didn't know English, and people spoke to them crazy, people spoke to them loud, people talked to them like they were stupid, and so my parents just stopped coming. But this generation is not like this, right? So I need you, and I ask you this, again, I'm not asking you to do anything special, be just, that's it, that's it. You know what was said, the recording is there, how could we have faith like that? You know, my daughter tells me stories of kids coming into class and other kids making sounds of bombs. There are kids going to the schools hiding their religion, because they're afraid of how other kids are going to treat them. And you know when she told me that? I said, "They're kids, they don't know." But we're not dealing with children anymore, now we're dealing with an adult, an educated adult, an adult that has power, and she did something and she needs to be held responsible, okay? Now, thank you for your time again. Again.
Thank you.
Again, one more thing, to the minorities up there, please, think about what you went through, think about what your families have gone through, think about your children, and think about what kind of world you would want your children to be in. This is nothing against someone who is not a minority, it's just I don't expect you to understand fully what we go through, but those of you that are there, you know who you are, do the right thing, all right, be just.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, good evening, my name is Mohammed Yusuf Ahmed, I'm from Amay Road. I want to start off by saying I'm an alumni from J.P. Stevens, I just graduated this year, Alhamdulillah, I don't know how I made it, but I did. But I've served as the Muslim Student Association Board Member since last year, March 2023, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the Iftar Party, that this is all coming from. Last year's Iftar Party, I feel like this would be the reason behind all this incident, right? When I was there personally, because I came on very late to the planning commission, I want to say it was very organized, right? The people that were running it, the other board members from the other schools that were allowed to be there, that were, you know, allowed by Mr. Ross and everybody, they did a tremendous job. I mean, I remember last year, there were no security issues or anything like that, right? Remember, it was basically clean, everyone got there, they set up, they cleaned up, everything was simple. And I want to speak about the comments of my friend, Talha Sheikh, which I'm probably the most proud of, right, being best friends with him. He was basically clean the entire time, he wasn't even on board last year, and he basically helped set up that entire event, to get it running, right? He helped with food, he helped with everything that you were, like, people were up, like, kind of trying to figure out, right? He helped with everything. And the issue that I saw this year, right, when we were trying to plan the same event, where we thought Mr. Ross was giving us support, I had many conversations with Talha, where he was saying, "Hey, Mr. Ross is letting us do this, we're good, let's all start planning, let's all start cooking," and all of a sudden, we're getting the opposite reaction from this other vice principal, who's saying these other things, and I didn't even know that there was threats made, if I'm going to be honest. I had no idea until I checked Instagram the other night. And I want to say I'm confused, I'm kind of puzzled, because the event that we had, that the Iftar Party, well, I didn't have it, obviously, it was run by the Edison High School guys now, the event that they had was clean. There wasn't any security breaches, right, there weren't any, like, random people walking in, it was all students from Edison, right? They're all people that were belonging at the school. And I'm shocked, I'm actually appalled, that that was even made by a vice principal, because when I walk into my school, and I'm sure any Edison High School guys can say the same things, when they walk into their school, what are we always told? "You guys are safe here," right, "The staff is here for you guys," right, "They want us to succeed," that's what we hear, "You guys want us to succeed, apparently." But when we're getting the opposite message, right, we're being told, "Express yourself freely, express yourself in a good way, a positive way," and then when we express ourselves, we're being told, "You're not going to go to college, you're not going to have a successful career, you're not going to have a successful life," we're confused. We don't understand what you guys want from us. Obviously, there's an investigation occurring from you guys, and I hope, like the last person spoke, right, I hope you guys find a clear and very concise end to that investigation. Because if I'm going to be honest, it's open and shut. The recording is right there, I know you guys have to go ask around and all that, but I can speak on his character. This is a guy who's been in STEM academies from Edison High School, right, straight A's. I remember, he'll hit me up at night when I'm struggling with my own issues, right? There are many people that look up to him, the guys sitting right here, they can all attest to it, they've all hit him up in the middle of the night, saying, "I have this issue, I'm sad, I need some help," they've all hit him up. And the fact is that you're threatening, like, my best friend, basically, you're threatening someone that's served this entire community, there have been so many incidents that he's basically avoided, that none of you will ever know about, because he stepped in and he spoke to people, he helped and caused change. But somehow, for some reason, you guys put someone in authority that has the audacity to threaten people like him, threaten people that are trying to cause a change, to help benefit you guys, honestly, so you guys can go, wake up and be like, "Oh, well, there's no incident today, I'm going to go on with my life." And instead, we're in a cycle now, where we're causing more issues. Only two years ago, we were at another town hall meeting for another thing, right, for more discrimination. I mean, this is on you guys, you guys are the ones who are basically helping put these people in authority. So I'm asking, when you do that investigation, don't look at the legal papers, don't be always looking around like, "Oh, maybe we can help them, we can help them," just do the right thing, find justice. I can't emphasize enough the amount that he has done for this entire community, I can't. I'm not saying that just because he's my best friend, I'm saying that because there's genuine proof, evidence, that he has done a lot for all of us here, that's why all of us are here, too. All these people, maybe they haven't even had a conversation with Talha, but they've all been affected by him in a positive way, and that's why they're here, because their own kids have seen the effects that he's done, the good things that he's done. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Dear members of the Board of Edison Education System, my name is Sophia Khadak, and I'm an intern at the Council on American Islamic Relations, New Jersey Chapter.
Please mention your address.
Your address.
Your address.
Sixty-four Oak.
Thank you.
I am here to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding an incident involving the Muslim Student Association at Edison High School and Assistant Principal Nicole Himmelstein. The students reported that during a brief meeting on February 29, 2024, their request to host a joint Iftar event with neighboring schools was denied, allegedly due to security concerns. This decision contradicted the MSA's history of hosting such events in previous years without issue. More troubling, however, is the audio recording of this meeting, where Assistant Principal allegedly heard making threats against students. She reportedly warned them as she would contact their universities and question their character and values if they sought out from, sought out support from outside entities to advocate for the joint event. Such comments are highly inappropriate and intimidating, suggesting that their college acceptance could be jeopardized for pursuing an inclusive, community-building event. These actions have left the MSA members feeling discriminated against, bullied, and fearful. Former MSA President Talha Sheikh and other board members of the MSA have expressed that they felt threatened and unfairly targeted for simply wanting to continue their tradition of fostering an inter-school community through an Iftar event. Karen New Jersey confirmed the authenticity of the audio recording and the details shared by the MSA students. It is imperative that the Board of Education review this matter seriously and take appropriate actions to ensure that all students are treated with respect and fairness, and that no student organization is subjected to such behavior in the future. The MSA's request for a joint Iftar was not just a logistical matter, it was an effort to build and maintain a sense of community and belonging among Muslim students in the area. We urge the Board to uphold the principles of inclusivity and support for all student groups in their efforts to celebrate and share their cultural and religious values and traditions. Thank you for your attention on a very serious matter.
Thank you. Next.
Folks, so she's walking to the microphone. Let the Chair, the Board President acknowledge you, and then you can come up, okay? Otherwise, we're going to have forty people coming up at once, and that'll be very difficult. So the Board President, you can raise your hand or stand up, the Board President will acknowledge you, okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Karen Fleischer, my address is forty-eight Walker Drive. So I initially came here to speak about the event that other people have been talking about, but I'm going to address that first, and then there's another thing I wanted to talk about. So I graduated high school in 2020, I was not active in high school at all, but in college, I became the president of a club and the VP of Finance of other clubs, and through that, I have learned the importance that being part of a club is. And through this club, the LGBT Club at my college, I have been able to host events, I have learned how to network, I have learned skills in my life that I would not have learned otherwise. And that's why I think it is so important to facilitate this kind of interaction and, you know, facilitate this for students, and not just, not just the fact that it's students, but it's also minority students, students who, like the other gentleman said, are victims of discrimination, I'm going off the cuff here, I apologize, victims of discrimination. And we need, like, you know, you guys want this to be a safe place for students, however, you know, with, how can you be safe in an environment where the staff are against you? I ask that. And as someone who was in high school recently, if it weren't for some of the staff members that were, that were so nice to me throughout my journey, I probably wouldn't be here right now. And that leads me into my next issue. I'm not, I'm not from Edison, I am from the central New Jersey area, though, so I am aware of, I forget what resolution it is, but the lady who spoke about it before, as I mentioned, I am the president of the LGBT Club at my college, and I am also transgender, female to male. Of course, I am starting my transition later in life, however, when I was in high school, I, if that, if I felt like I had someone to go to about my problems, I wouldn't have, I would have started transitioning a lot earlier in life, and I would be a lot happier with myself. And the woman brought up a very good point, which is that, you know, how are we supposed to trust that children as young as five have influence in their lives? How are we supposed to trust that the adults in their life aren't influencing them? The problem is that in our everyday lives, we are already so heavily influenced by gendered marketing, you know, as soon as the gender reveal comes out, you buy the pink baby, the pink baby onesies and all that stuff. I argue that, I have a personal story. When I was younger, I hated going shopping for clothes, because we could never find anything that I liked, and it was because we were shopping in the girls' section. And finally, my sophomore year of high school, my mom was like, "Why don't we try the boys' section?" And finally, it was like a release. And of course, I didn't have anyone to, sorry, let me think for a second, I'm going off the cuff here, I wasn't anticipating talking about this. This is just a very important issue to me, because I may not have been out as transgender when I was in high school, when I was in middle school, but I did have a friend named Michael. And with the support of school staff, he was not only able to confide in his peers and confide in the school staff, but he was also able to facilitate the communication and come out to his parents. That's what I think is important, you know? And you did make a good point, whoever spoke, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, what about the cisgender children? I would like to remind you that the current Board of Education already caters to cisgender children, because they are considered the default. And, I'm sorry, I wasn't planning this, but I just think it's important to know that that policy was made with the intent of helping children, and I do think that there could be, there are ways to go about it, however, I just think it's important to know that we're all on the same side. Here, we want to facilitate kids, we want to facilitate the happiness of kids, we want to facilitate the long-term happiness of kids. And I'm not saying that we should start hormones for kids as young as five years old, because, you know, that's not, you know, I don't know, I am, but I just think it's important to have a safe place for children to talk about things, because if I was not able to express myself how I, my true self, then I would probably not be here today. I just think it's very important for children to be able to express themselves. And I get the point where, you know, you know, children, you know, teachers aren't supposed to be handling this stuff, but I think we can all say that throughout our time in middle school, high school, we all had that one teacher who made us feel comfortable and made us feel welcome, and we didn't necessarily talk to them about all of our problems, but there was that one teacher where we felt like we could, you know, trust. And I think the important thing is that the happiness and the healthiness of our children comes first. And there are so many things that I wish that I had when I was in high school, when I was in middle school, when I was in elementary school, that I didn't have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next for public comments. Yes, German in blue.
Good afternoon, Talha Sheikh, I'm Mohammed Talha Sheikh, fifty-two Holcras Avenue. Thank you, Board. I'd like to personally, before I even start, thank Bureau Patel for calling me and having a conference call with me on Friday to discuss the situation and to give his personal input. It feels reassuring and a little validating to have the Board President talk about how the situation was, right? But I guess, let's talk about the elephant in the room. I was one of the MSA eight, one of the eight students who was threatened in the meeting, and I was also not personally called out once, but twice by name, as the leader, as the infiltrator, as the mafia lead of the terrorism club, as what was proposed. Why would somebody threaten eight students? I wasn't the best student, we can all understand that, I know there's a lot of teachers here, and some of my teachers would say I was a good student, right? But why would you threaten eight students, many of which who have not, anything on their record? None of us have been suspended, none of us have got into fights. This event is one of the most peaceful events that happened in Edison High. In fact, if you look at every other clubs, there's no music, there's no dancing, there's no mosh pits, this is one of the most peaceful interfaith events, as said by Mr. Ross, and I want to talk a little bit more about that. There were no security issues or security threats or any of these accusations made. Let's talk about Edison policy, if there were any fights or anything, there would be an incident report written by Senior Jimenez or any of the advisors. But let's go down to the water papers, let's go down to the money, where the trail is, were there any incident reports written? And you guys can obviously do your investigation, there were no incident reports written. But I want to talk about more about this situation, because I know there's a lot of context that you guys are willing to want to find out, that only myself or one of the eight, seven MSA board members are able to give. And that context dams the reality of the situation. And I know the attorney, I'm sorry for sweating because of how bad the situation is.
I had an itch.
Yeah, don't worry. But this situation is serious, right? If a vice principal and administrator is able to and is comfortable with threatening a student, eight students in a private meeting so publicly, where she does not second-guess herself, imagine what happens when there's no recording. Imagine if we didn't record that, imagine if the student, whoever did, recorded that. And I want to talk about the past six months, because when Friday morning I opened my Instagram and I saw that Instagram reel, I felt traumatized back to the point when I felt on February 29th. I felt as if I was reliving the memories of February 29th, where the four years I worked hard for were going to waste. I felt as if I was being threatened again. And there are so many people asking in the community, and irrespective of the community in general, asking, "Why is this being released now? Why is this six months after, five months after being released now?" My question to you guys is, who cares? Because the reality is, every eight of us are first-generation Americans, none of us have, our parents may have not even graduated high school. Our parents did not graduate high school, and they wanted to see us walk the stage. So the reality is, why we're releasing this now, is because we wanted to ensure our safety. We wanted to ensure that we would get into our colleges and walk that stage without being threatened again by Nicole Himmelstein. And I want to talk more about the situation. The teacher did not, the Assistant Principal did not randomly threaten us, but this was built off multiple, multiple meetings. If you guys go, and I know Dennis in the back is recording, I would love for you guys to do an IT investigation and go through the emails as well, but there's an over fifteen-plus email chain link of us trying to schedule a meeting with Nicole Himmelstein and trying to get down to why she's saying no. In fact, I'll give an example of February 23rd, I believe, I don't have the dates, but I can check my phone. February 23rd, myself and my co-president in the audience, as well as my advisor, meeting with Nicole Himmelstein as scheduled. This was after the second time she stood us up. We stood over three hours in the office, considering this is a half-day. We stood over three hours in the office, considering this is a half-day. We stood over three hours in the office, waiting for her. And the secretary first started off when we met that she's busy, she's on a call, she'll get to you. Three hours later, we say, "Oh, she's not in the office anymore," and they kick us out. My co-president and I go to fill out the water in the front, front of the office, there's a water station, and we see Nicole Hemelstein walk out. So, what type of expectation are we setting as administrators that you're able to stand up meetings multiple times? She alleged that, basically, there's no time to plan this, this very last-minute planning, but we started the planning way earlier. There's multiple documentations and proofs and recorded evidence that we planned this as a board the last summer before, in the 2023 summer. So, there is no excuse to say that this was planned last. And I know Mr. Ross is in the office, and I want to really mention this. I felt this extremely disrespectful because there's another incident that after Nicole Hemelstein via email said no to this, that I personally, as a student, went to Mr. Ross' office. And I sat two hours in the office, and I waited and I waited, I skipped class, I skipped tests, I skipped my homework, just so that I could wait in his office. And me and Mr. Ross, me and Mr. Ross sat down and we talked about it. And in his own words, obviously, there's no recording, but you could check the cameras so you can see the actual date that I met him, that he said, "Mrs. Hemelstein doesn't know what she's talking about. This event has always been good. You guys can go forward." So, where is this inconsistency between the president and assistant, or the principal and assistant principal, between whether this event can happen or cannot happen? There's a way major inconsistency between that. And the fact to threaten eight students over colleges? We're not protesting like T-Nec High students. We didn't do anything with the yearbook like East Brunswick students. Both of those students and those MSAs got death threats, right? What are we encouraging and advocating for? An if-ta party where people break their fast after starving and fasting for eight hours? That's the reality of the situation. And today, I'm so afraid and so scared, not for myself and because my own skin, my own reputation, my own career is in the game, but I'm scared for the community members and the Muslims and all these students who are coming after me. I'm not scared to talk, and my fear is not... My fear today, my fidgeting, me not sleeping last night, me skipping so many events for the past week, is not because of the fact that I'm scared for myself, but what about the students who come after?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next for public comments.
Hello, my name is Haseeb Rahman. I live in ninety-three Carriage Drive, Piscataway. I'm a class of 2022 alumni of Piscataway High School, and I was a member of Piscataway High School's Muslim Student Association at that time. And as the annual tradition has been for all these years, I had the honor of being able to help out with the Edison High School if-tari. And it truly was a pleasure working with the Edison High School MSA with some of the current board members here right now, including Taha Sheikh. And I say this as a testament to their character, especially right now with their character being slandered by Nicole Hemelstein. And as a returning alumni of last year's if-tari as well, again, coming as a guest, it really was a pleasure being a guest of both Edison High School and Piscataway High School's MSA. I have to testify to Taha Sheikh's character, Bakr al-Ummari's character, the president of Piscataway High School's MSA back then. So, I hope that you take my experiences with this if-tari to account in the administration investigation of this and not just discard my words because my words have been reiterated by Mr. Ross also, who I also had the pleasure of working with in 2022. From the previous years of my experience with this if-tari, this idea of security issues, as was falsely brought up by Nicole Hemelstein, is just something that has come out of nowhere. The fact that the Edison High School MSA and quote-unquote "outside aggressors" meaning us, meaning our MSA, has been slandered like this is absolutely unacceptable. Trying to cancel our tradition because of this supposed alleged security issue is one thing, but threatening students who are trying to push for it, who are seeking outside help for this, threatening Taha Sheikh, threatening the eight Edison High School MSA board members, this is absolutely, after four years of hard work threatening their education, this is absolutely unacceptable. And I also have to say, again, working with the administration back then, with Mr. Ross at least, I don't know about Nicole Hemelstein, but working with Mr. Ross was a pleasure too. And I'm not surprised that he's been reiterating that, that nothing, that these allegations of security issues are coming from nowhere. So, I deplore that all of a sudden that this switch-up is happening from Nicole Hemelstein, from other administration members. I deplore that the Edison High School MSA and our MSA, our Piscataway High School MSA as outside aggressors is being slandered as troublemakers and as causers of security issues. And I reiterate the call of action of my friends here, of my community members, of the MSA board members, and all of us here to take to account Nicole Hemelstein for her actions, for her threats. And I hope that our Muslim youngins, our Muslims in school right now, our, our upcoming generations, aren't deprived of the blessings that we have, the blessings of having, especially after the genocide that has started in October seventh and the threats that our community has been, have been facing on the daily. Thank you.
Okay. Next for public comments, Mr. Mara. Mr. Mara.
Excuse me, ma'am. He is next. Mr. Mara is next. You can have a seat.
Anthony Mara, five Coletto Court in Edison. I'm here again to talk about Policy Fifty-seven, Fifty-six, as I have before. Last time I was here, I spoke of the Golden Rule, a rule that God himself gave us, the Lord Jesus Christ. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. You can't argue with the Golden Rule. Relationships that follow the Golden Rule are blessed. Those that do not, they suffer. The reason I bring this up is because Policy Fifty-seven, Fifty-six is contrary to the Golden Rule. I don't know how many on the board are parents. Does any parent really want to be kept in the dark about the subject of change of gender? Your son, your daughter says to a member of the Board of Ed, the school system, "I'm going to change my gender," and you're not told because Policy Fifty-seven, Fifty-six tells you to stay in the dark, to keep you there so you don't know. There isn't a parent around who wants to be kept in the dark on something like that, but you're doing it. If you don't want to be kept in the dark, why are you doing it to other parents? That's hypocrisy. That is hypocrisy. Don't do it to others if you don't want it done to you. Repeal Fifty-seven, Fifty-six now. That same God, Jesus Christ, spoke about marriage and said, and I'll read it verbatim, this is not a Bible school lesson here, but it says, "In the Gospel of Matthew, have you not read that he who created them from the beginning made them male and female?" Two genders. Not male, female, or some other numbers. This is not chocolate, vanilla, strawberry, pistachio, or some other myriad of, of choices. There's two genders. That's why the suicide rate is high amongst teenagers. It's not discrimination. We're messing with the fundamental building blocks of human creation. You mess with fundamental building blocks and a foundation, the building collapses. You mess with the fundamental building blocks of creation, metaphorically speaking, the building starts to collapse. I also spoke about the Ten Commandments on one occasion, specifically the fifth commandment, honor your father and your mother. Less well-known about that commandment is that comes with a promise. Again, I'm going to read it verbatim. Honor your father and your mother so that your days may be prolonged in the land which the Lord your God gives you. In simple terms, honor mom and dad, and it's a blessing. Dishonor mom and dad, and the reverse happens. Now, it doesn't say that in the fifth commandment, but it does say it elsewhere in Scripture. Policy Fifty-seven, Fifty-six dishonors mom and dad. Keeping them in the dark? There isn't a parent... Repeal Fifty-seven, Fifty-six now. You afraid of lawsuits? Have some backbone, have some courage. What are you going to say to our students? What are you going to say to our, their parents? What are you going to say to their parents when thing, when the building starts to collapse? "Oh, I was afraid of lawsuits. It's not in the budget. We don't have..." Find the money. If you can be intimidated by a lawsuit, then anything somebody wants can be accomplished by simply intimidating a lawsuit. It comes with the territory. Lawsuits happen. Have the backbone to stand up to the lawsuit. If you cannot lift a ten-pound weight, how are you going to lift a fifty-pound weight? If you cannot run a mile, how are you going to run ten miles? My point is, if you can't repeal it now when it's easy, relatively easy, how are you going to do it when it's more difficult? You think Policy Fifty-seven, Fifty-six is the end? It's just the beginning. It's going to get worse. The LGBTQ community will demand more. They will demand more, and if you can't repeal it now, how are you going to do it later when they're demanding even more? Repeal it now. There comes a point at which you have to have the backbone and the courage to say, "I will stand up for what is right." There are those who tell you that, who will tell you, "Policy Fifty-seven, Fifty-six is necessary for equality," or something like that. You're messing with the backbone of society. This isn't about adding two plus two in math or spell. This is fundamental human nature, and it's now in your hands to make sure that it gets, this policy gets repealed. I thank you for your time, and I have one other request. There's another person who wants to speak on the same subject who's having back problems tonight. She would like to get out as soon as possible. Her name is Cindy Ma. I asked the Chair, the President, to recognize her next so her back doesn't continue to bother her.
Okay. Next for public comments. Stephen Green.
Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for your service. My name is Cindy Ma, and I want to, you know, speak up against Policy Five-seven, Five-six, which I believe is anti-parent. Policy Five-seven, Five-six does not allow parents to know their own child's chosen sexual identity in school. This policy is contrary to common sense. Students are not, are not allowed to even take aspirin without their parents' permission in school. Now, parents are blocked from knowing about their child's chosen sexual identity, which is part of their child's emotional, psychological, and physical well-being. The government cannot usurp parental rights in this area of their child's sexuality. It's wrong to hide this truth from parents. It's the basic rights, it's the basic constitutional right of parents to know what is going on with their best interests. The state is turning kids against their parents, instilling a distrust of their parents, thinking they know better than their parents, and adding stress to a student's already confused emotional state. It is educators' responsibility to protect children from their psychological immaturity of equating their feelings to being truth. Educators should not be affirming them in their transgender ideology that if you change your body to match your feelings, you will be happy. It's the opposite. If you change your mind, your feelings will follow. A person cannot change one's biological sex even if a person changes their body. Sexual identity is given by God, not achieved. And, and you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free. That's from John chapter, it's from the Bible. Okay? The claim that Policy Five-seven, Five-six is put in place so transgender students can feel safe is really not safe for them or others. Okay? The claim that transgenders will commit suicide from not being accepted from others is false because the basis of their suicide is they cannot accept themselves if they do not know the truth. The truth heals. Truth sets free. Lies destroy. Lies lead you down to the road of destruction. There are so many transgenders who have regretted what they have done to their bodies, and in the UK, they are suing the hospital for surgeries because their bodies are damaged forever. The hospital has been shut down. If you follow the money, the push for transgender medicine and surgery is a money-making business. It explains why so many transgenders, despite the acceptance from society, hormone therapy, and sex change, yet they still experience a high level of anxiety, depression, and suicidal thoughts. They're really fighting against the God-given internal truth within themselves. There are so many detransitioners that give this testimony in state hearings and congressional meetings. Okay? Now, the, the school cannot elevate trans rights over parents and other students. When biological males are allowed to go into female bathrooms and locker rooms according to how they feel, it violates female students and their feelings of safety. Why are rules changed to accommodate feelings instead of what is right? There have been incidents of rape in school districts where girls have been raped by biological males claiming to be females. Lawsuits will follow. I mean, lawsuits have followed these cases. So, the BOE is responsible and should be more afraid of these lawsuits coming, coming than the pressure and threats from the government of not being politically correct. This mandate gender ideology curriculum in schools does not produce safety, it produces victims. Recent to Policy Five-seven, Five-six, many New Jersey school districts have already done so, and I have sent you guys all the names of the school districts that have recent Policy Five-seven, Five-six. Do not be implicit in allowing transgender ideology to dominate and confuse the youth in this, in the education. The basis of America's government has been for the people, of the people, by the people. We, the people, should stand against wrong-biased policies that the federal government tries to mandate in schools on us and our families and our children. We should, you know, this, I got one minute of this. The Spider-Man movie says, you know what? With great power comes great responsibility. God has given you great power. Use that great power to stand for truth. Okay? And we should fear God instead of man. Instead of caving into politically correct rights, let's do what's right for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next for public comments. I'll get someone from the side. On the last. Pastor.
Hello. My name is Safa. My address is eighty-five Hemmen Street. And I just had a very, I mean, I think it's a little bit of a quick address, but there are some of the things that people have mentioned, some of the words that they've used that I just want to reiterate. And one of the things that I feel like most people here are really concerned about is the safety of their children, the safety of their siblings at your schools. My brother just graduated, and the thought that he could not graduate had he attended an event or had he advocated for an event that identifies with his identity is insane, and it makes me feel afraid. When I was growing up in US as a young Muslim girl, being called terrorist, being called all of these things, now I thought the world had changed significantly. These things make me afraid. And I think that there's stuff, there's just things that I want to mention that the first speaker said. She said, "Purpose of an educator is to teach and inspire learning. If we don't speak up for our children, who will?" This is my brother. But if I don't speak up for him, who will? And one of the things that I, I want to, like, reiterate what Nicole said. She said, "Your positions can be revoked. I have no problem contacting your universities where you got in and explaining what's going on if you want to take it further." This is a threat. As a vice president, why have you guys not had proper checks and balances to make sure that this language is not used? And if there were proper checks and balances, why was this person allowed? That's kind of like something that I'm, like, really concerned about. What goes into your checks and balances? If these are the conversations that she's having with students, to tell students not to go to other authorities to confirm what she is saying is really scary to me. These children are fourteen-to-seventeen, eighteen-year-olds. Like the first speaker said, they need people to advocate for them, they need their parents to advocate for them, they need teachers to advocate for them. How, as a vice- How, as a vice principal, is it okay for you to tell them not to do that? Not to confirm what she's saying? And then on top of that, if they do, you will threaten their acceptance. What else has she done where she has threatened like consequences for certain actions? What else has she told these students they cannot do? What else has she done to them that she says, oh, well, if you speak up about this, there will be consequences? It makes me really afraid for them, especially minority students, especially minority students with parents who don't speak English, who are immigrants. Where were the checks and balances? And if there were checks and balances done, why was this person allowed? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, let him on the left.
Thank you. My name is Musa Najeeh. Address 570 Broad Street. And I'm here on behalf of CARE New Jersey, a concern on American Islamic relations. There's a lot of things being said that are dissimilar. I'm here to address the incident with the assistant principal at Edison High School. I'm not going to speak directly about Taha's character and how much of an excellent student he is. I think there's dozens of people here who would attest to that. But I do want to congratulate Taha on getting into one of the best colleges in the United States, regardless of the threats made by the vice principal. But I didn't stop her. But I'm here to talk about the safety of the students in general. All students at Edison High School, all students in the district of Edison in general, not just for high school students, middle students, middle school students and elementary school students. There's a lot of policies, there's a lot of workshops around student bullying, student-to-student bullying. But we have a unique case here with an administration to student bullying. And it's a lot more threatening to student-to-student bullying. We have, this is, there's consequences of mental and physical abuse here. It's, when a student works for four years and becomes a high achiever in order to attend a dream college, and not only is Taha and the MSA students just high achievers in the classroom, but they are in the community. They're here to educate the community. They're here to share their cultural and religious beliefs. They're here to share this excitement that they look forward to. They started planning this in the summer of 2023. This is an event to teach the community about Islam. This is an event to teach the community and just bring the, to educate the community on the religion and the beauty of the religion and the unity that it brings. But for a vice principal to threaten the students to write to their colleges and give them an ultimatum that they have this event by themselves without any other students, as they have done in the past. And other students have mentioned this, other speakers, that Mr. Ross himself has attended these events in the past. And there's the concern of it's a security risk in the past. That doesn't fall on the students. The MSA club is not responsible for ensuring the safety of the students there. They are the students. The administration is responsible for ensuring the safety of the students. So that falls on Ms. Himmelstein. That is her responsibility to ensure the safety of the students. It is her responsibility to ensure that the club and the event that is being upheld is upheld to the rules of the high school. It is not up to the students. And canceling the event to ignore those responsibilities is what must be investigated here. You've mentioned that there is an ongoing investigation and we, we really do appreciate that. And we wish, we know you can't share details about the investigation, but we wish you do share the end results of this investigation prior to the school year starting so that we know what is going to happen in order to ensure the safety of the students in the coming year. Aside from the investigation, there should be a reevaluation of the assistant principal's responsibilities in this, in this high school. If she is, if the assistant principal is responsible for the clubs and other organizing groups at this high school, then it must be reevaluated. There's a clear case of a lack of cultural and religious sensitivity here. She does not have the right respect, the right tools to manage these clubs and ensure the safety of the students while also upholding the diversity of this community. Once again, I don't want to repeat too much what happened, but I, I do call on the board to please share the outcomes of this investigation and to also please reevaluate the responsibilities of the assistant principal to ensure the safety of the students and also to uphold the transparency, transparency values that you guys mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, woman.
Hello, everyone. My name is Robin Connell and I am retired, but I've taught at Edison High School for 38 years. My address is 2 Ethel Road. I decided to speak here after listening to so many people speak. I also agree that I want everyone in this investigation to be fair, to listen to both sides of the story. The students need to be heard and the administration also needs to be heard. No one's been able to speak about Nicole Kesselman and I would like to say that in all the years that I have worked with her, she has been a very fair administrator. She listens. We don't know what took place. We have one video, we have one. We don't hear all the other conversations that were said prior. And as a teacher in 38 years, I have had a wonderful relationship with all of my students. I really haven't had a bad relationship in 38 years. But sometimes students or parents don't understand that no means no. It's a difficult pill to swallow. I'm not, I'm not saying I understand why and what took place, but I do understand that we need to hear both sides of the story, whatever that story is. And I hope that as the investigation goes, that we understand that it isn't a one side or the other. And hopefully, when this is resolved, it brings peace to both sides of this because I know that Edison High School has a wonderful relationship with our students and we do support the Muslim community very strongly. I don't know what happened the year before, but I do know that nobody here tonight is allowed to speak about it from the administrative side. So because they cannot be heard, I just want people to understand that there are definitely two sides here. And Nicole Kesselman is a kind woman, a mother of young children with a family. That also is becoming threatened. I don't think it was her intention in any way. I don't think that there's anybody that works at Edison that feels that. But if this misunderstanding has taken place, we need to understand and not retaliate. Fighting back and forth is not the answer. We just need to understand, work to understanding, and move forward as Edison always has. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Hanan.
Hi. As a concerned alumni of EHS.
Your name, sure.
Hanan Arshad, 114 Adewald Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a concerned alumni of EHS, I came here to see everyone's opinions, to have an open mind. I recall we had a saying in EHS, you can't hide that ego pride. And well, for this alumni, my pride is with my community for willing to be able to stand up and speak their minds on an injustice. Because for so many of you, you can only imagine how petrifying. You can hear in so many of our voices, for us, for first generations, for immigrants, to stand up and speak on this. Especially this young man today that I just met. Congrats to him, that's huge. We, as minorities, we, we do not have the privilege to make a mistake. Every word, everything we do has to be precise because we get hyper scrutinized for anything we do. So for me, when I watched that audio, the behavior, the audacity of the assistant vice principal in the context of that audio clip, taking that context, because that is important, was beyond reprehensible. To threaten, to contact the colleges of accepted students, meaning they've already proven their worth over a dispute over something as trivial as the coordination of an event is not only an overreach of someone's authority, but a glaring display of poor leadership skills, especially for the one in the field of education who's supposed to build leaders, not clip their wings. If there was such a big security issue, which mind you, again, as a graduate of EHS, I have been to MSA, I've been to these clubs. They are well organized. I have seen how hard these guys work. And as someone who was a vice president of Key Club and other different clubs, I know the work it takes. Then it was her responsibility to foster an environment of collaboration and understanding in which she could come up with productive solutions alongside these young children here by being an approachable individual instead of one who became a figure to be feared and who used coercion tactics. Her actions, in my opinion, starkly contrast the views I was taught by leaders like Mr. Ross, who came to students, no matter who you were or how you acted in school, he came with respect and approachability. It's about the execution. And the execution here was poor. The callous and condescending tone combined with the swiftness in which this situation's been escalated also seems to have revealed a pattern of behavior that is not what I expect from the assistant principal of Edison High School, no matter the situation. In your investigation, I suggest looking at the plethora of comments. Because again, I just met this young man here. So I went and looked in. I saw the CARE New Jersey Instagram post where alumni, parents after parents, children after children, were saying, year after year, alumni, people from my years, were going, year after year, detailing, recounting abuse after abuse by that individual, underscoring that this may not be an isolated incident. Many of these students, I might add, were students of color, marginalized backgrounds, suggesting a troubling bias. And that seems to, someone may be on a bit of a power trip. As a minority, the fear of power being abused against us and potential discrimination is all too real, even in Edison. And I can account on that. And we know there are people who are going to dismiss this as us just saying, oh, it's discrimination, it's nothing, and trying to undermine the struggles of people like us. I commend these students for taking on this challenge. The board needs to set a precedent here that this kind of behavior is intolerable and hopefully prevent other issues. Because I will say this, as someone who has been in Edison for, Jesus, over 20 years, there are many other instances that occur under our noses that are unbeknownst to us because they don't get recorded. This is incident that could be a symptom of a systemic issue within Edison schools. It doesn't mean that our schools aren't great. In fact, Edison schools are the best because we demand nothing than excellence from our schools and we ensure that when an issue comes out like this, our community comes out and says this is a problem. So, I understand that this is an ongoing investigation and you can't comment. I urge you, though, to provide actionable steps to resolve this matter and ensure it never happens again and that these students, their siblings that may go to EHS or will go into EHS or are there already, that the crowd here today, that the speakers that are here today will not face retaliation, aggression from this individual or any like-minded colleagues or allies. Again, I call for a precedent that ensures that this behavior is tolerated, no matter who's at fault, so as to ensure that every student, regardless of race or background, can pursue their education without fear in an environment of collaboration, of progress that is productive. Thank you.
Next, Liz. Excuse me, ma'am. After that alcohol.
Elizabeth Han, I won't be giving my address because a threat was made against my family. So I've sat here now for the last 45, 50, hour and listened to everybody get up here and speak. And the facts matter. You stated, what does it matter that it waited all this time to come out, all these months later? The facts matter. They matter. We don't know the other side of it. And I agree, an investigation needs to be done and both sides need to be clearly examined. But my question is, why is my 15-year-old daughter getting threats because of who her father is, because he ran for political office? Threats that have to do with this incident. The police had to come to my house last night. I didn't sleep at all last night. So, you guys don't realize, words matter. The facts matter. When you get up here and you speak emotionally charged words with passion and, and a number of adjectives, you have to, because you want to get your point across, right? But they matter. There's threats being made against my family. There's threats being made against the vice principal. She has little kids. It's a horrible way to live, to be scared like that. I've lived it once before when he ran for mayor. I know what it's like. You don't wish that upon anyone. So I understand when you guys say, I get nervous, I'm scared, and people are going to look at me or what they think of me. I live it every day, my daughter lives it every day. And I might look white, I might sound white. You don't know my genealogy or who I am or where I came from, my parents did. But I live it because of political reasons. So I just hope that whatever your reasoning was for coming out with this all these months later, it was because you wanted to do it for the right reasons and not because you're listening to bad advice or somebody's pushing you to do it or putting you up to it for bad reasons. Because the facts matter. And I hope they get out. And I hope that all of you do the right thing and examine this to the fullest extent you can. Thank you.
Thank you. You can go next.
Hi, my name is Yusor Sheikh, 52 Hillcrest Avenue. I'm a former EHS alumni, class of 2021. I'm the daughter of immigrants and my brother is Taha Sheikh. I'm his older sister. And I just wanted to bring to attention that the previous speaker made me feel really invalidated right now. So, I appreciate those laughs, thank you. That also made me feel invalidated. And everyone who came here and spoke so far, I'm sure they feel invalidated as well. I come to the podium to share a policy that you or maybe your predecessors have put into place called HIB. A lot of my fellow alumni and maybe even current students always made fun of it. This policy, this acronym stands for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Nicole Himmelstein Kesselman violated that policy, violated it against the students that she was meant to protect. Someone else had come up here and said, what about the policies that protect our students against administrators? HIB is great. It empowers students to speak against bullying in terms of their peers, in terms of things that go on on the bus, in the classroom, in the lunchroom. But no one speaks about what happens when it comes to an administrator harassing, intimidating, and bullying their students. Everyone can tell by that recording that that was harassment, intimidation, and bullying, whether you want to deny it or you want to make it invalidate it, invalidate what happened. I agree. I agree a full investigation should occur. And I agree that the proper decision should be made. I do not believe that threats should be made. I do not believe that a woman with children, and I'm a product of Edison High School, I'm a product of Edison Township. I do not want to see death threats being made to anyone, no matter what side they're on, no matter what they believe in. I do not believe in violence like that. But at the same time, I believe in justice. And I believe that justice will be served. And I hope that the board will give the proper transparency to the situation. Now, in terms of Taha's character, he's my younger brother. I mean, I can say that he's probably the most annoying person I know. But in terms of what he does for this community, it's a lot. This is a beautiful event and a lot of you board members may not know about it. But if you came out, if you saw it, it's a beautiful intermingling of our community, of other communities. It's not just for the Muslims of the community, but it's also for non-Muslims. I'm sure a lot of past alumnis can attest that it's a very fun event to get to know other students' culture and religion and be a part of it. A lot of Taha's former teachers are here. And even though they might not want to admit it today in this situation, he's a great student, he's a caring student, he's, he's a wonderful person. He not only is part of a situation that he's just, like, he doesn't do it to just do it, he does it with his full heart. And I'm sure a lot of, I'm sure a lot of his teachers and his, the fellow community members can attest to this. I just wanted to end off by saying that that recording not only violates HIB policy. By the way, I saw, I heard Dr. Alderelli is doing a revamp of the website. And the current website, if you scroll all the way down to the Edison High page, there's a big if you scroll all the way down to the Edison High page, there's a big thing about HIB, and press it as soon as possible, and you can report it. That's how easy our township makes it to report an incident. So, I mean, it doesn't matter how long it took for this incident to be reported, but it's important that it's here right now and we should address it. But anyway, what I was saying was, HIB was violated by Nicole Himmelstein, and she violates everything that a vice principal should be in terms of the rights of her students. Students should not be unsafe, feel unsafe, not by their peers, not by their teachers, not by their administration. I'm very grateful for the education Edison Township has given me, and I feel like it has empowered me to come up here today and speak in front of you, and I'm very thankful that I had the privilege of getting this education, and I'd like students in the future to also have this privilege, have this right, and have the importance of speaking out against any hatred that they feel. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Woodruff, and I live at 323 Wembley Place in Marlborough. I want to thank you for your dedication and service on behalf of the community and the children. I'm fully aware that your school district is one of the best in the state academically, and you should be applauded. But I'm here to speak about the 5756 policy. Is this working? We know the 576 policy was designed to protect the LGBTQ++ community, but there's already a comprehensive anti-bullying policy in place that includes gender non-conforming students, so why a special policy? The 5756 transgender policy is ambiguous and divisive, giving special rights to a small group of children while taking away the privacy rights of the majority. It puts teachers in an uncomfortable, deceitful position, often against their beliefs and their morals. When a child wants to identify as something different than their birth gender, the school must affirm it, and parents do not have to be notified. There is nothing definitive in the 576 policy as to when to include the parents, or when to keep the parents in the dark. This is not only ambiguous, it is a legal nightmare. I could give a laundry list of why this policy should be abolished, but I'll stick to the basics. The 5756 policy is affirming and encouraging a culture and behavior based on feelings. Feelings change, feelings can be deceptive, and acting out on them is often not good for us. Instead of teaching kids how to be critical or logical thinkers, we're telling them how to feel. We're here today, that may be your truth, but this is my truth. There is only one truth, and there are only two genders. Facts don't care about feelings, so what are we doing? What are we promoting? How can a student believe anything a teacher says if the teacher goes along with something that is contrary to basic biology? If we don't affirm transgender ideology, we are called transphobes or hateful people, that we don't love or care for the child. This is so contrary to the truth. When did love require approval? If my parents allowed me to do everything I wanted to do when I was a teenager, would that mean they loved me more than the parents that imposed strict rules and guidelines? Of course not. Too often today, parents want to be buddies with their kids, and that may hold true with some schoolteachers and counselors, but is that what is best for the kids? Children not only need direction and guidance, they crave it. I am here and speaking against the 5756 policy so adamantly, because I really care about these kids. Adolescence is a difficult time. Kids are developing emotionally and physically, and just trying to fit in. If we just love and encourage these kids and tell them the truth, most will outgrow this teenage phase, but if we encourage or affirm their non-conforming gender, the child is more likely to continue down this self-defeating and detrimental path. The path that starts with social transitioning, but leads to medical transitioning and often surgical transitioning. We don't want these innocent children to be medical patients for life, possibly not being able to bear children themselves because of a decision they made at a vulnerable age, when their brain was not fully developed. Being the adults in the room, we cannot be quiet, we must stand up for these kids. You are the gatekeepers. As the woman so effectively said before, you have great power and a great responsibility. Do the right thing. We won't want to look back someday and wish we had acted differently. Thank you.
You've already went, so, well, there's only one time, public comments for one person. You in the back, third row. No, you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mustafa Akbari, I live at 4801 Hannah Road, and I kind of wanted to just come up here to speak a little more, to give some greater context on the event that's in question, the Ithar event. So I'm a EHS alumni from the class 2018, and I believe we held this event for the first time in 2017. This is because Ramadan had fallen under the time when we're still in school, because before, the years before that, it happened during the summer, so we used this opportunity while Ramadan is happening during school to have this Ithar event. And the idea behind it was, the intention was that it be a community event. We collaborated with other schools, Piscataway High School, I think JP Stevens was also involved, and is making an open community event for everyone, Muslims and non-Muslims alike, to come and enjoy and eat food and break fast together. And that was kind of the idea behind the event, and from what I remember, it was very successful, really good turnout, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I remember it being our only first year, we had a really good turnout of students, teachers, alumni, parents, and just communities, members of the community. Again, so, really successful event, we had a lot of food even, people brought in food, we catered food, I think we even had a chocolate fountain, which was great. But yeah, it was, again, a very successful event, and I think it was even more successful, I take a lot of pride in it, because me and the MSA board at the time, again, it was our first time doing this, and the reason I'm so proud of it is because, one, it was a great event the day of, but also it's a tradition that kept on going year after year. And again, we started in 2017, and thankfully, it's great to see that it's been going on even till this year. And so I think, again, that's a really, really big deal, right? The whole idea of it is to bring the community together, the whole idea is that we bring in Muslims who can come, break their fast, as well as, you know, break their fast with their peers, and have some great activities to play, you know, to do, but also bring in non-Muslims, right? So they can learn a little bit about what we're doing, what the point of fasting is, what the point of Ramadan is, you know, again, make it a whole community event. So I kind of wanted to provide context on the idea that this isn't just meant for, obviously, it's great that S and high school students are attending, but the idea is that we bring the community together, right? And some people mentioned here before that the idea is to do, they were doing an investigation, which is great, and both sides had to be considered. However, I think when it comes to a point where, when things get personal in a professional setting, that's when it becomes an issue, right? During my time, again, I was on the MSA board, I graduated in 2018, anytime we had an issue or a problem, or anytime there's disagreement, it was always handled professionally, regardless of there was disagreement, or we didn't see eye to eye, it was always handled professionally, whether it be, you know, talking with administrators, having us as students, our voices be heard and our opinions heard, and then being told whether what's allowed, what's not allowed, regardless of if we didn't see eye to eye, it was always handled professionally. And so, again, even though there's investigation happening, I think it's a point to note that this has become personal, right? When you're threatening someone's, a student's future, when it comes to getting down to saying that, literally on record, having it said that, you're going to be reaching out to your future, they don't have any jurisdiction there, but they're still going to be reaching out and trying to affect a student's future, I think that's when it becomes personal and very unprofessional. And so, again, I think that's something that needs to be considered, you know, when conducting this investigation, and just as some people have said before, I think it's important that we, us as a public, know what the resolution is, what happens, what comes from this, because while, while it's unfortunate that this happened, and you know, this situation is transpiring, I think it's important that it did happen, so that we know what to do and how to move forward, and we uncovered these things early rather than later, right? Because if this weren't recorded, if this were to happen again, it could lead to, you know, a bunch of students' future being affected, when it doesn't need to be. So, again, just like everyone said, I asked that you, you know, share the results of whatever happens. And also, one point I also want to make is, I do work with some of the students that were in question outside of school, through another organization called YM, and I can only say that, that to speak to their characters, that it's only been to help the community, right? It's only been to serve the community. It's never anything selfish, never anything for themselves, I'm doing this for myself, I'm doing this again to call it, I'm doing this for recognition, none of that. The point of the work that we do, the point of this work is for the community, to serve the community, to serve the people who are involved in our community. And so I think to threaten someone, or to have, to threaten someone's future over trying to serve the community, I think is a wrong way to address the situation. Again, I've only ever had good interactions with, you know, the faculty during my time at high school, and, you know, Mr. Ross included, I mean, I've had a great experience in EHS, but to hear this is really disappointing and really saddening, to see that an event that we created, that we thought would be, that was a success and will continue to be a success, is the point of such controversy and such an issue. And so, again, I only hope that this is resolved, you know, professionally and peacefully, and, you know, no further quote-unquote threats are made, and we can be able to come to a conclusion. So, thank you.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? I'm here today due to the deeply
Please announce your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jawariya Mohammed, and I'm a resident of Piscataway. I'm here today due to the deeply concerning events that transpired with the Edison High School Assistant Principal and the students of the MSA. I proudly taught in this district for seven years. During my time, I also co-advised the Middle School Model UN Club. I share this to let you know that I understand the enormous amount of work that comes with running one of the largest clubs in the school, and all that entails. The late after-school meetings, waiting even later to make sure all students are picked up by parents, planning out-of-state trips to conferences, finding chaperones, and hosting conferences where multiple schools are invited. Ultimately, I helped advise the club because I cared for the values it stood for and the students, not because it was easy. I also learned the great responsibility teachers, advisors, and all adults have in a school. When we become educators in whatever capacity, we promise to protect, support, and uplift students. Therefore, I was disappointed upon hearing that students from the Muslim Student Association Club were threatened with their futures when they requested to hold their annual joint Ithar with nearby schools. This was an opportunity where students could have been commended on their efforts for fostering a sense of community and practicing their faith, but instead, they were intimidated. I was hurt that this occurred in the same district that prides itself on diversity. We are living in a time when anti-Muslim hate is increasing across our country, and events like these further isolate our students who are already marginalized. We need accountability and transparency, and it is your responsibility as the adults sitting in this room to protect our children, just as you would your own. Thank you so much.
Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim. My name is Mohammed Hamza Ahmed. I am from Eight Mile Road. I graduated from John P. Stevens High School in 2021, and I remember growing up in a time where, in this town of Edison, Muslims didn't really have that many facilities. I remember we used to pray our Friday prayers in some random restaurant on Oak Tree Road, which doesn't, isn't even open anymore. And I know that today, especially after the pandemic, I think me and Taha's sister were a generation that finished high school near the end of the pandemic. Taha is a post-pandemic student. A lot of the facilities that these younger kids have now, I didn't have growing up, and a lot of it is due to the sincere work that Taha has put in, along with his friends, including my brother, who's sitting on the head over there. You can likely ask, as Taha's sister said, a lot of his classmates, both Muslim and non-Muslim, about Taha's character. Taha's sister has also said good things about his character. I would also like to say Taha is an honest person. In our time, the MSA was just a couple of guys who used to get together and pray Friday prayers. We would rarely have interactions with other people outside of our school, we rarely had Ithars. I'm actually surprised that Edison High School had these Ithars. And I'm really happy that for the future of our Muslim community, that our younger people have these facilities in both Edison High School and JP Stevens, because I didn't know they were doing this thing together before. Something I want to state, people have been talking about the fact that both sides aren't being listened to. When Taha was speaking here, and I think other people as well, they said to launch an investigation, not just into the video, not just interviewing, but looking at the emails too. They are very, very confident about what is happening here. They're very confident that their side is the just side. And it's absolutely unacceptable, by the way, that a student would be threatened in this way. And by the way, Taha, at that time, along with his other classmates and peers, were all minors at the time. They were threatened that they'd be reported to their school for literally having a constitutionally protected religious event. I remember when I was growing up, there were other students who made some immature comments. I remember in the early 2010s, I believe, that's when I came to Edison, late 2000s, early 2010s. I remember comments being made about bombs, mocking that the Ghibir of Allah Akbar was defended by other students at the time. And at the end of the day, I know that this is just students being immature. Kids are immature, I was immature, so I can't blame them for the way they acted when they were younger. However, the vice principal, or assistant principal, somebody in a position of power, somebody that students would go to for help, somebody that students were going to for help, actually, you guys were going to her for help to get this Ithar thing done. For this person to threaten you like that is absolutely unacceptable to happen in these schools. If something like that happened to me, that would be, you know, I would react in a very, very negative manner myself. And the fact of the matter is that nothing like this did happen to me. For me, it was fellow students, as I just stated. This is somebody who is in a position of authority. As a child, authority is, any adult is somebody you trust. Any adult, when they say something, you trust it as, okay, this is correct. If an adult is saying, I'm going to threaten you, or I'm going to report you to schools for causing problems, colleges for causing problems, that is a very, very damaging thing to say to a child. And I just want to say, nothing like that ever happened to me. So it's very, very concerning that we're going in an opposite direction to worse than it was in the early 2010s. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am speaking to you today as someone who has
Your name, please.
My name is Adina Amir. I'm from 85 Heman Street. As someone who has faced discrimination in the workplace, I was working in the International Labor Organization as a part of the United Nations, and my boss told me I couldn't pray in the office, and that I was too religious. This is something that's against our constitutional rights, and I remember being in the UN, being with the constitutional rights of religious freedom, being so scared to speak up. It's not easy to say how scary a situation is when the person in front of you holds your entire future. I commend the people who, after graduating, chose to still speak up about a situation that doesn't affect them anymore. They're out of college, high school. But it's the concern for the community which causes you to speak up, and it's a really scary and very important decision to make. And so, I want to make sure that we're not putting the blame on the students for speaking up. For the death threats that are made, it's not the students' fault for speaking up, it's the people It's the administration's responsibility to protect these children and to protect the community. It's not these children's responsibility to protect the people who are, it's not a good situation, you should not have death threats to you, but it's not their fault. That's the point I want to make. The subjective reality and the objective truth are two, can be two separate things. You can experience someone in a positive light, but that doesn't change the objective truth that they harassed someone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Majahid Sheikh, 52 Hillcrest Avenue. That's my son, Mohammed Taha, just for the record, okay? So I just have a question here. As some lady said that they're receiving threats for all this, right? And I have also a question to the board. All through that conversation, she kept pointing out at my son. I think you should have, you as board members should have stopped that. I am talking to you, I'm not talking to anybody in the audience there. I don't think, I don't understand why you did not stop that part. As far as I know, when the meeting is there, you're supposed to address the chair, not even the other board members. Am I right, attorney? Am I right, attorney? So, so now, when she stands here and she talks to my son, do I take that as a threat? So that's one thing. Second thing is that I understand that this iftar event was there. I am okay with that if the administration didn't want to hold that. Personally, there are many things which I want to happen in my, in my personal job. My, 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 my job could tell me, no, you cannot have it. That's fair enough. But the question here is, if you did not want to hold it, did you get the right to speak to a child? Forget it's not being my son. Did she have the right to speak and tell him that I'm going to report, maybe not him only, maybe all the eight other students? Did she have the right to speak and tell him then that, okay, you know, I'm going to report? Is she, is she, is that her right? Is that, as an administrator, do you think that's her right? Is that what you have given, empowered the vice principals to do now?
Yes.
I'm hearing a yes.
Excuse me? You can, you can continue speaking.
All right. Second thing I want to ask you, when did this happen? Is this the Edison policy now? That when there's a problem with the child, the vice principal can bring the child in or get those people in? If she thinks these children were out of line, is there no parental involvement now? Have anybody, not one person has come here and asked this question here, that if the principal, the vice principal was having a problem, irrespective of it's my being son, there were other eight, other, other seven children, did they even approach any of the parents saying, you know what, your children are getting out of line, we need to have a, we need to sit down and counsel them? So you call the children in a room and you blatantly threaten them? Is that where it's coming to now? And somebody asked, somebody said, somebody said that, why is this coming up now? Why is it coming up? I see three beautiful ladies sitting here. All of us sitting here have mothers and sisters and, and aunts and, and things. So if in the Me Too movement, if those, those ladies who have come up after number of years, what happens to them? Are you going to tell them that, why did you come out now? Is that what is going to come down to this country now? So they cannot speak just because they were silent, they were, they were abused for so many years, after three years, five years, if they come out? I would like to, I would like to know that. I hope you guys have the conscience to answer that question yourself. Every one of us has mothers and sisters. I see three beautiful women sitting here in this board. So tomorrow, if tomorrow, if they come out against some abuse, they should not be coming out again. So what did this child do wrong after coming after six months? What would you have done? It's a question of the careers which is involved here. What would they would have done? Second thing, I'm sorry, I have to keep looking. What I'm saying is that one more thing, whatever you guys decide here, I don't care. I mean, it does matter, I'm sure you guys are competent. You guys have been elected, you have, have second terms and third terms. I'm sure the superintendent has a, has a vast experience, and I know we are in good hands. Whatever you decide, remember, whatever you decide, there's a clear message which is going to go out to the community. And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if that community is made of immigrants, white, racial, whatever the racial demographic is, it doesn't matter. They will have that message, clear message, that today, the board had a case in front of them, and this is what they decided. I want you to understand that, no matter what you do, no matter, it doesn't matter. I'm sure I have full faith in this, in this board. I do. I absolutely do. But to have, and, and, and somebody making, somebody also said about, oh, that, that lady is having threats. I absolutely abhor that thing. I, I, I absolutely protest and I say that, that's what the police are for, right? Why have we hired the police? They should go. And so now, what happens in this case, when my son is threatened, he is not supposed to speak up? Is that what it comes down to? Is that what it comes down to? That means my son or a child should be kept silent, right? That, and, and when, is it, is this not bullying? If this is not bullying, what is bullying? You please tell me. I would like you to, I would like you to go on your website, Superintendent, and have a clear policy about what is bullying. Because I know you're, you're revamping a website, please do that. I know I have short of time, but I want to say one, one quick thing. I believe strongly that justice is not just, it should be done, not just done, it should be seen to be done. You need to have a clear action plan on what is happening here. It doesn't matter. And remember, it's not just this one child. That, and did you, did you guys even look at the social media posts? There'll be, once we move into this kind of, if we take a next step, I can tell you, people will be coming out of the woodworks here. I can assure you, I can assure, I'm sure you have seen, everybody has seen those posts where people of color have been speaking up. And at the end, I know I have only eight seconds. I just want to end and say that, whatever happens, I'm very proud of my son, I'm very proud of what he's taken up to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yeah, you in the back.
Hi, my name is Yassin Zahir. I graduated JP Stevens last year, and during my time there, I served as the MSA president. I would like to start by saying that as an organizer and attendee of the iftar in question, there were no security threats to the school or the students attending the iftar. We took attendance, we had tickets for students from every school, and we had check-in at entry to ensure restricted flow of students coming in and going out. Teachers from our respective schools were invited with advisors and security personnel given by the school. The event was ran safely in the same way it had been for the past seven years. The same schools that were stopped from attending the iftar frequently come to Edison High School for sporting events, for football games. If the students from these schools are allowed to attend as a part of football team, as a part of the track team, DECA, Model UN, then these same schools, Muslim Students' Associations should be allowed to come and not labeled as a security threat. When the EHS MSA students were antagonized and then threatened, the VP said, the VP posed a threat to their futures. Take a moment and understand what I'm saying. The security of these students' futures was threatened. So I ask you, who is the security threat? With all due respect, this is, this almost seems like bullying by a person in power, and it truly pains for me to have this label on a, on a person who's clearly educated and a senior member of the school. Yes, it may have only been one recording, but that's an incident that occurred one too many times. Under no circumstance should a student's security be threatened by someone who can directly affect their future. There are no sides to this argument. Educators are put in place to educate and to protect, not to threaten. So I urge you to uphold the promise of diversity and equality that Edison wears so proudly, and stand by the principle that educators protect students and stand by them, not against them and their future. Thank you.
Thank you. You can go next.
Bismillah, Rahmanirrahim. My address is 621 Hosland West in Piscataway. So you will be wondering why I'm here from Piscataway. That shows the importance of the issue itself. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. I have two simple points, and I won't talk too much because enough is said and enough needs to be done now. So I'm a physician, I'm a psychiatrist. Do we understand what trauma we have given to these children? Do we understand what is PTSD? When you threaten somebody, and these growing, growing minds, how do they feel? So this is a trauma given to them. And how come a teacher, assistant principal traumatizes young brains rather than helping them and rescuing them when they need? So Nicole is a human being. She can, she can do mistakes, but she is a teacher. She's a higher-level authority vice principal. She is not expected to do this. So as a physician, it is a big trauma, it is part of the PTSD, and young children can not bear that. So we must keep it in mind medically speaking. The second thing which I want to say and quickly say is, what role model is this person has given to their children or the, you know, students? My father was a teacher, I was also a teacher for some time, and I respect the teachers very much. We should be the role models. How could be a threatening teacher be a role model in any way, at any level? So we must understand that this is not acceptable. And then the father came, and now, just few minutes before, I realized I'm also a father. How would I feel as a father if my son is threatened for his career, for his profession, for everything? So there are many things to say, but we must understand this should not be acceptable at all. From a person who comes from authority, from a person who is threatening somebody who has no authority, from a person who is threatening somebody who is much younger than him. So I don't need to speak too much, this is enough. I think so you guys need to do enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public things? Yeah, there in the back.
Good evening, everybody.
My name is Daha Fifi. I am a student, I'm an alumni of Edison High, graduated just this year, and I was the co-president of the MSA. Honestly, my time at EHS was, I didn't have many problems there, but I just wanted to come up here because now that my time is done, I'm focused on the students who still have to continue attending this school in the years to come. I'm not worried about my safety because honestly, I'm already in college, I have orientation on the first, I could care less about what has happened in high school, but I care about the students that are still going to continue having to deal with Himmelsstein and her negative attitude towards them every day. I understand that somebody has come up to say that bringing this up has brought about threats to her family. However, that's, that doesn't invalidate the fact that we should still talk about this. Just because the incident happened and some people took the information and treated it poorly, that does not change the fact that students were threatened. These are minors, these are kids who have to continue going to this school and have to continue seeing Himmelsstein on a regular day-to-day basis. I'd like to say that in planning this MSA iftar event, I was so excited. When I, when I found out that I was president my junior year, for my senior year, I was excited. I had seen the iftar event two years because there was none during my freshman year during COVID. And so I'd seen it play out, and I was so excited to improve on the event and just make it like a very welcoming and, and create like an open community for a lot of Muslims and non-Muslim students. I know that many of my friends who show up to iftar party every year are not even Muslim, and they fast with us that day because they see the culture and the importance of being, like acknowledging the people around them. And I'd like to say that after the events that transpired with Ms. Himmelsstein, I was intimidated from posing new events, from fostering school spirit, because if I'm going to come up here and I'm going to put myself out there and I'm going to try to plan this event, this event that, mind you, is not easy to prepare for. I had, me and my board, we, we continued the event after the events of Ms. Himmelsstein canceling it with the other schools, but it was much more tasking than we had anticipated, but we managed to make it through. And I'd like to say that it, coming out with an event like this and asking for support and for help and trying to get this communication started between an administrator and students who are trying to improve their community and getting this aggression back from the administrator, you're, you're disheartening a lot of students from ever trying to support our EHS community. Another incident that I had with Ms. Himmelsstein, that doesn't have to do with this, and it wasn't a threatening incident, but we had planned for a class council, a March Madness event, and we had set this date since September, and she had agreed on this date. And then, two weeks prior to the event, she said, no, can't give you the gym on that day, you have to move the day up or you're going to cancel the event. So me and my fellow Class of 2024 board members had to scramble to get this event going because this money was integral for us to continue in our senior events. We needed the fundraising money from this event in order to pursue, to continue with prom and senior barbecue and all the events that made a lot of students' senior years significant. And so when having an administrator who's unwilling to communicate and unwilling, and when she does communicate, she does so with aggression, it's disheartening to students. And I wouldn't want that for my sister who's going to EHS next year. I wouldn't want her to not be involved in the school just because somebody has threatened her and scared her away from going to college, just because they, they are asking, they weren't, we were not even being threatening, we didn't accuse her of anything, we simply asked her to explain herself and to communicate in an effective manner, and she could not even do that. That scared me, and it scares me that a lot of other students are going to have to face that. And I understand why a lot of the board members who are still attending EHS didn't come up here and talk today, because I would be scared too. If I had to continue in a school and fear that my college acceptance would be threatened because I wanted to host a cultural event, I would, I would probably like never talk to anybody ever again. I wouldn't participate in school events. Why would I participate if it's going to threaten my success in the future? And that's not something that we should be fostering at EHS, because it's extremely important for us to be encouraging our students and encouraging our future students to continue to create a, a community with a lot of school spirit. And I don't think that Ms. Himmelsstein fosters that community at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to start off with the story.
Your name and address.
My name is Asma, I live in 137 Best Gate. And I just wanted to like, you know, I grew up here, I graduated from JP Stevens in 1996. And I always lived here. I told my girls, they sometimes question me, Mama, why didn't you move? Why didn't you move? I said, no, you know, this is the community, this is the community that's like, it helped me grow, it's going to help me grow. But after listening to the, you know, I was like, you know, I was like hurt, because I tell my girls, no, Edison is great, Edison is great. They're like, no, Mama, we have to move, we have to move. So I wouldn't listen. And when I hear this voice, you know, she just made me listen to it on the car, and I was like about to cry, I'm like, what is this? What happened here, you know? What happened to the teachers, staff, all this, you know, all the people who always cared about everybody? Because when I grew up here, I know there was always bad, good, worst, whatever, but with, with the students, not with the like, you know, teachers. The teacher was always supported us, supported me when I grew up here, they never had any problems with me. If I had a problem, I would go to them, they would resolve it, you know, they would help me. At every stage, they helped me, you know? And now I hear this, this kid, like, the vice principal, it's like, I was like feeling, I was like crying in the car, I'm like, what happened? You know, I have to go speak, this is not right. So, you know, I just want to say, thank you for everything, but I would really appreciate if you could, you know, listen to both sides of the story and, you know, be justice, because then if my kids need to grow up, and if their kids need to grow up, I'm going to move out of here, Edison, because this is not right. I mean, it doesn't, because I always thought Edison is someplace that is the best education, best teachers, best everybody, you have equal rights for everything, but with all this happening, I mean, I question myself, that I, you know, my, is it, is it good for me to keep staying here or should I move out of this district? So I just want to say thank you, and I hope, you know, you come to a conclusion which is justice and fair for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, see you in the back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maha. I'm a 2023 graduate of Edison High School and the previous co-president of MSA. I'm not here to speak on anyone's character, but I think I owe it to myself and the people behind me to share the journey with facts and figures and my personal truthful experiences that I've had with Edison High School and in particular with MSA. Just in 2022-2023 school year, we collaborated with Piscataway JP and North Brunswick High School to host a iftar gathering for 500-plus students. Not once did we have a single doubt in our minds that we wouldn't be able to execute this event, and this is because throughout my high school years, the administration and faculty has never shown discriminatory behavior or microaggressions towards me or any of the people that I know of my faith. Mr. Ross and other teachers have shown up numerous times in our general meetings, interacting with Muslim students, asking them what changes they would like in the school that would allow us to feel more comfortable. So when hosting set iftar party in 2023, every other school refused to host it because either they could not hold the capacity for such numbers, or their administration was simply uncomfortable with a plethora of Muslim students in one place. We at Edison High School were lucky to not only host this gathering, but receive constant support and appreciation for it. To reiterate what many others before me have said, there were no security issues. We had our advisor and other school advisors, along with security guards and a complete checking system. At the end of the day, you can expect minor misconduct from high school students. I also agree that these students should take accountability, but there were no such events that would cause her to threaten the board members of MSA, such as reaching out to colleges. I personally had my teachers, who I invited and those that attended, constantly tell me how glad they were to attend the event- constantly tell me how glad they were to attend the event and learn more about Islam and just have an overall positive experience bonding with the students and the teachers. However, that being said, if you look at the Karen New Jersey's post, there were also comments from board members of other clubs such as Peacock Society, one of the largest clubs at Edison High School, that was told by Ms. Himmelstein that they would not be able to host their events and invite outside students. Other students have expressed similar concerns about how overall they just received ill treatment from her. But last year, receiving approval from her regarding the Iftar party was as easy as a few emails and sending our advisor. So this is not a us versus them war. This is high school and this was an event that had serious miscommunication more from the administration side than the students. I know that everyone here and behind me can agree when I say that the situation could have handled so much maturely and in a timely and professional manner. And I do wish that Mr. Ross and other administration could have gotten involved. Now, Ms. Himmelstein has created such negativity between her and the students through such behavior and honestly has hindered the confidence of students for future events, but it is not okay for people to be calling her, and I quote, "a pig or an evil woman" without knowing the entire story. If we all take a breather at the end of the day from the conversation that we have heard, I wouldn't label this as Islamophobia or discrimination, but just as an administrator who has their own set of rules and guidelines to follow and might not have the most pleasant of personalities, and that is okay. If the students are stepping out of their comfort zones and taking risks, why are you, as an educator and administrator, not allowing them to host events that is setting the standard for such a comfortable environment for current and future POC students? And that and reaching to extreme lengths? So that is a question that many people, including I, that has and needs to be answered. I know that there are many alumni today in the audience wondering what happened to the great Edison High that they knew. And as someone who has attended Edison High School and just graduated pretty recently, I can assure you that your child is safe at Edison High and has an environment to grow and prosper. These teachers over here behind us are here today because they care. However, students waiting up to three hours just to have a meeting and hearing a blatant no and hearing possible action taken for their colleges is nothing less for all students, Muslims or non-Muslims alike. And she could have contacted the club advisor at the time or involved Mr. Ross again, fully debriefing the event and the planning. This does not make her an evil person or an Islamophobe. And while I can't speak for her intentions, this is something that is just messed up at the principle of the situation and that is something that I wish can be clarified through investigation. Thank you.
Anybody else? In the back.
Hello, my name is Maz Khan, 11 Caldwell Road, and I am proud alumnus of Edison High School. To begin, I want to say that I've I had an amazing experience at Edison High. You know, the fantastic education and thanks, you know, in no small part to the teachers of Edison High School that I received was the basis of all my my present and continuing success. With that said, it's extremely unfortunate that this incident has occurred. You know, I had, again, as a part of the MSA when I was at Edison High, I had nothing but great experiences. I had, you know, fantastic teachers and advisors that were a part of my life and they were mentors and it was frankly amazing. But with that being said, I think it should be understood that, you know, emotions are running high with regards to many of the things that are happening in our world, not just here in Edison, but abroad as well. With the connectedness of the world as it is today, we are seeing a lot of the things and we are seeing a lot of the violence and the genocide that is being perpetrated overseas. You know, if we see any sort of hint of that locally, it evokes a certain response. Human beings are tribalistic for good and for ill. Human beings can be tribalistic and we sometimes we get defensive when one of our own is threatened. And that is to say, you know, when when our when our young people, when their futures are threatened, we get defensive. But also when, you know, a colleague of ours has, you know, allegedly death threats made against them, we get defensive. We get, we get, you know, we want to protect that person. And it's it's important that we, first of all, you know, death threats or whatever that is, you know, that's completely unacceptable if that's true. But I don't think anyone, you know, I think somebody came to this podium and implied that there was some responsibility for those threats in this room. And I don't think that's true. You know, people are crazy online, you know, anyone sitting anywhere can make any sort of threats. But I don't think anyone in this room is responsible for any sort of threats made against the person that that's being discussed. It's completely unacceptable, but the people in this room came to get some sort of justice and answers in a constructive way. We came to to the appropriate people, the Board of Education. So those death threats are unacceptable. But what is also unacceptable is downplaying and in any way attempting to negate the seriousness of what was threatened. The futures of eight young people is not a small matter. People, you know, people do not take that lightly and it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable that those threats were made. I would want to ask the Board of Education, what sort of policies are in place regarding student discipline? If there is a conflict between an administrator and a student, is the appropriate course of action to go to such extreme measures? Such as, you know, contacting college admissions boards? That just seems, I mean, the conversation needs to be had regarding proportionality, right? Just as whatever actions this person may or may not have done do not warrant death threats, again, issue of proportionality, just like that, whatever issues have happened between a student, you know, whether it's behavior related or whether it's a conflict over what is allowed and what is not allowed, proportionality demands of us that we do not go to such extreme measures as revoking college, you know, admissions and threatening futures. Especially because from what the audio, again, the audio is not the full story. That is fair. But the audio seems to imply that it was a power tripping sort of thing. She was threatening retaliation for him, the person involved, going to speaking to this person or that person. And that sort of thing, a sort of power tripping move is unacceptable. You know, an administrator should not be playing these petty power games. You know, if if there's an issue with discipline, yes, then there can be disciplinary measures according to protocol, but there should not be some sort of, you know, power tripping sort of ego, you know, in play where an administrator threatens the futures of many young people just because they do not, they question her her decisions. I want to thank you for your time. I, you know, I don't know what to say. This whole situation is really messed up. But I appreciate that you'll take the time and I hope that you will take the time to to do a thorough investigation, to speak to all parties and to come to the right conclusions and take appropriate action. It's unacceptable that, you know, this was allowed to happen. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I hope you all are having a wonderful day, evening. My name is Ayan Sayed. I am from the humble town of Oak Tree Road, from J.P. Stevens, former board member. You know, and I'm here to speak about the incident, as all of y'all may have heard. You know, it really is, it's surprising to me to see that the MSA has grown so much. Like, I'll give you some context. From my my era, there was only 10 kids, 10 people would show up. But now I'm seeing pictures on Instagram, videos of the community growing by masses and triples. And I'm seeing even this Iftar thing, it's a new thing that's that's brought up for the community. And and to see such a result from my my friend here, Daha, when the vice principal is essentially, you know, harassing him in that way, you know, revoking the access to college. Like, I have to ask you all a question. Like, imagine if it was your son or your daughter who came up and said that the administration is potentially revoking my access to college. How would you feel? You'd feel bad, right? You'd feel you'd feel kind of like, damn, like, what happened? You know, and that's not, that's not a place of safety. Also, regarding the month, right? The Iftar event itself, Ramadan is the month of the Quran, right? It's the month where our hearts are supposed to feel peace. It's supposed to feel a sense of tranquility. And what danger is there in an event where students are coming together? Non-Muslims too, by the way. The MSA's purpose is not just for Muslims, but it's to bring that inclusive environment for non-Muslims as well to learn about the beauty of their religion. What danger is there if they're collabing? And yes, I understand safety is an issue, but this is an event that is made out of good intention and pure heart and and especially hitting these eight board members with with the statement like their college access is being revoked. I think that is that is terrible. That is, that is something, you know, that should be more investigated. And I don't really have much to say, but what I'm going to end off with is a quote by one of my my role models, Malcolm X, who says that "A man who stands for nothing will fall for anything." And I truly believe that here, my boy, Daha Sheikh, and all these eight board members, they're standing for something, right? We have to give them credit. They're standing for something here. So this this idea of there being two sides, there's either a side of justice or there's a side of not justice. And and here, as your your chair right here, you guys have to find out what's the side of justice. And I'm telling you, it's quite obvious if I'm asking, if I'm seeing myself. The side of justice is clear. Now you guys just have to open your eyes and make the decision. Thank you.
My name is Danya and I'm 227 Crowes Road, Edison. But like I said, my name is Danya and I am an Edison High alum, Class of 2022. I held a position on the MSA board for two years and I was the president of MSA in 2022, another year when we held a successful MSA Iftar party alongside one of the previous speakers who was president of Piscataway's MSA Club. I want to reference the video posted by Karen Jam Friday, which included a recording of Nicole Tesselmann-Himmelstein, where you can hear her threatening the eight students on the MSA board this previous year. And when you look through the plethora of comments underneath the video clip, half of the, half of them are experiences from students who have been a part of MSA and/or attended the annual Iftars. And the administration in question today is that same administration that supported the MSA in organizing and hosting our Iftar parties for the last few years. The other half of the comments underneath the video are from students who were not Muslim and who maybe have never even come to an MSA event during their time at Edison High School, yet their experiences are very similar. Nicole Himmelstein made them feel threatened with the power that she holds. Now, I'm not here to argue the case of MSA because many people here have already spoken that. But if a person in administration, a vice principal, has made not just one, but multiple students over the years feel intimidated, harassed and violated, then we shouldn't have a bully interacting with our students. The comments. The comments have proven that this isn't a one-time occurrence. This has happened time and time and time again. Many of my previous teachers are here in the audience and I have to say that the teachers at Edison High School are amazing educators. Mr. Ross, our longtime principal, has gone above and beyond for the students there as well. Mr. Ross was not the type of principal you normally see in other high schools. He was always in the high schools, he was always in the hallways greeting students, talking to them and making them feel welcomed. He was truly what was great about Edison High School. My point that I'm making is that this isn't just an issue with the Muslim community in Edison, but all students. If Himmelstein has felt comfortable enough to threaten students over the years, she is not fit to work with students. And while we heard that Nicole Himmelstein is a woman with young children, it's clear that she didn't think twice when threatening kids, students in high school. So when we ask what's great about Edison High School, it's the students who can stand up in the face of adversity. It's the educators who care for the students as their own kids. It's Mr. Ross who has always, who always shows up for his students. But I would not include Himmelstein. While I don't believe she's an Islamophobe, I do believe that she's a rude administrator who could have handled the situation in a much better manner. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Basit Mohammed and I live at 49 Lillian Terrace, Piscataway, New Jersey. And I was the MSA president of the 2024 year at Piscataway High School. And I'm not here to repeat some of the comments made by others, but rather I'm here to describe the stark contrast between Edison High School's administration, Edison District administration versus the experiences that I faced at Piscataway High School and with their administration and with their district administration. A situation like this, where a student, multiple students, eight students, were threatened about their futures with something that was so trivial, such a trivial matter, that didn't have to be handled the way that it was. The back and forth that Daha Sheikh and the other members of the board had to go through to get those meetings, those small meetings, those informal meetings, is unacceptable. It would have been very simple for you guys to meet. In fact, at Piscataway High School, all it takes is a school G message to my principal and then I'm there in his office, the day of. And we speak, we speak about everything. Mr. Baldassano, we speak about everything that we need to. If there's an issue, a small issue too, he helps us out. My assistant principal, who also manages the clubs at Piscataway High School, Mr. Bertisia, if there's any small issue, he helps us out. If he hears of an issue that Muslim students are facing, he comes, directs, directly talks to the MSA. That's what administration looks like. That's what leadership looks like. I don't know much about this Mr. Ross, nor any of you, but I do know that what proper administration and what proper leadership should look like, and it doesn't look like what I've been seeing. If we had an issue, I met myself personally multiple times with the superintendent about minor issues that you guys might not even think are important. And all it takes, and now it's taking, a recording. Thousands of people to see a video, large Instagram accounts for you guys to address an issue, for you guys to talk about an issue. And you might not see the effects of what this problem has called, has caused, this threat. Many people are coming up here and saying that, how dare this Nicole Himmelstein threaten these eight people? But it's not just those eight people that were affected. Not just the eight people on the EHS board. The entire MSA of the of EHS was affected. They were threatened. They were scared. How could my own school do this to me? And if we broaden that impact even further, I was scared as the president of the Piscataway High School MSA to hear that my my friend, my good friend, Daha Sheikh, was getting this type of treatment because he wanted to do an event, an event that's always brought good. In fact, the board members at PHS paid for that event. They they funded. They donate their own money sometimes to see that event. They come. Dr. Gray, he comes and he sees every single time how great an event it is. If you guys want, go talk to him. He'll tell you about that event. He's not Muslim. He's Christian. He'll tell you about that event. But regardless, you guys have affected the EHS, Piscataway High School, the board members at Piscataway High School, including myself, the people at Piscataway High School who have heard about this situation. You've affected them. You've affected J.P. Stevens, the board at J.P. Stevens, the people at J.P. Stevens. Already you've affected over 300 people. Add their parents to that. 900 people. The schools all in central Jersey, the words of one person matter. You might not think that they matter, but Nicole Himmelstein, the way that she acted, the way that she threatened these students, has an effect. And you can sit there, think of me as another guy who's talking up here. Think of everyone as just another thing, they're coming and talking about the same person. You might think you understand the situation, but I promise you, you don't. And if I'm being honest with you, you never will. It will be very difficult for you to understand the situation unless you live it. And even me personally, I don't understand the situation. Those eight board members are the only ones that do, fully, that fear. When I watch that video, when I hear that recording and I hear Daha's voice, this strong, confident, inspirational young man, that shaky okay, not saying anything back, it hurts me because I know the type of man he is. I know what he's capable of. I know what he's capable of. So you've affected this many people. And I know you guys have an investigation. And I know the truth will come out from that investigation. And I know all of you know what to do from that investigation. And I implore you, are you going to do it? Or are you going to negatively affect more people? Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Aya Alambusi and I am the Communications Manager for CARE New Jersey. And I oversaw the release of the audio. And first, I want to thank every member here. I know it's been a long day for you. So thank you so much for creating the space for us to speak up and hear their story and what they've been going through. And secondly, I would like to condemn the threats if they did happen. Death threats or any type of threats really, they go against the core values of Islam, the core values of the mission of CARE New Jersey and the work that we're trying to do. There are a couple of things that I want to address that came up during the conversation tonight. This idea of both-sideism, when we say that we need to listen to both sides and give them equal space, that may be the case if it's a student versus student. But this is a, these are students, be it that brown students versus a school official who threatened these students. So the grounds are not equal here, right? So we're not going to equate the victims of these threats with the person who made these threats. I don't know the assistant principal's character, so I can't speak to her. But I can speak to the audio and how it made community members feel and the amount of messages that we've been getting from students who they may not have commented on the video publicly, but we've been getting a lot of private messages from people sharing their experience. And I even spoke with an MSA student because there has been questions about why hasn't this come out earlier? If anything, the fact that it's coming out now should speak to how much fear these students were feeling at the moment. They needed to wait until not only graduation happened, but even a month after to make sure that nobody was gonna come after them. And for some reason, it's been construed as something that should undermine the facts, but that's just a distraction from the actual issue here. If the audio is really is released a year from now, it would still be valid because it's authentic and it happened. And this school official, if you cannot say something publicly, then you should not be saying it privately. This school I find it hard to believe that these threats would have been made if it was in front of teachers or other students. And again, we condemn the threats that have been happening. That is not okay. But at the same time, it is not okay to try and to undermine the experiences of these students. It is not okay to somehow question, oh, like, is this really happening? That's like Godsliding 101. This happens and they're experiencing it. And like everyone has already said, the goal is to bring about positive change. And the reason that I wanted to bring the point of both-sideism here, I really hope that the investigation isn't going to treat brown students, Muslim students, who have been told that their event causes some kind of a security risk to their school, when it's just a community event really. They're just trying to get together, have a meal together. Ramadan is the most communal month of the year for millions of Muslims around the world. And these students just wanted to hang out at school and have a nice meal. And instead, they faced these threats and at the very least, that's just not okay. And I hope that the board members here don't equate a school official attempting to use her power, well, I should say abuse her power to threaten young Muslims. I'm not, I'm sure that's not the legacy that Edison, that the Edison Board of Education wants to leave behind. Thank you.
Anyone who haven't gone? The lady?
Hi, my name is Mahakmantri. My address is 19 Ashbrook Drive. So I just want to start off by saying that I grew up in the Edison School District. I have done my entire education here from kindergarten to my senior year of high school. I want to be proud of where I grew up and for the town and the education system that has quite literally shaped me into who I am today. But today I am disappointed. Disappointed that this behavior has the potential to even be justified or considered to be remotely okay. Edison is known for the rigor of their education. Edison is known for creating students that go to Ivy League colleges, for students that go far, that succeed, that become CEOs. Education from when you step into kindergarten in Edison School District is imprinted into us. I remember being in elementary school and just thinking, okay, I need to do good. I need to get that A. And that's that's the story of every single student who has lived in Edison Township. With this in mind, I would like to just add that we need to reconsider the gravity of the threat that the vice principal made. Because Edison has always prioritized education, to go after something as strong as a college acceptance is a very big deal. I think that we do not think about how important our education is within this country and what college you go to matters. It affects not only where you're going to go, but what you are going to do with your life. To take students who have worked for their entire education, their entire school career, and to then threaten that hard work is, it's completely like it's it's genuinely unfathomable. You are not only threatening the importance and the excellence of and the prestige that is fostered within this district, but you are then threatening the potential livelihood of the rest of their lives if they're then, if that college acceptance is then taken away from them. I think we really need to stop and consider what was said and how important it is and the effect that it would have had on those students. It is completely inappropriate. And to even consider it to not be or to say it is justified or, you know, students might have pushed one too many times for an event that really was not a security threat is not okay. Thank you.
We'll have two more speakers, last two speakers. You already went, so you can go ahead. I'll get you.
Zed Mansuri, 19 Ashbrook Drive. So I wanted to talk about how the video played out. So the video that was posted, the teachers threatening Taha Sheikh and all the other MSA students acceptances into colleges. This is something that a lot of students work hard towards, including myself, who went to JP and went through the Edison School System. And that's the number one priority of the school system. So to go out and threaten that is a abuse of power and just it's not okay, not not okay by any moral or ethical regards or by regards of a vice principal being put in a position of power. And also, I wanted to bring up the point that even though the students might have pushed a few buttons or whatever the students did, they're still students at the end of the day. They are allowed to ask the, ask the board, ask the administration what they want to do and they should be allowed to express their their hopes and their goals of an event freely. The administration has to act more professional and more responsibly than the students because they are the administration. That is their job. They have been trained to do so. And for the administration to go out and just abuse their power, frankly, for no reason, and to try to just stop an event is inappropriate and quite literally disgusting. I was on, I was there at the first Aftar that they were talking about. I was helping organize it. I was on the JPS MSA Board at that time. And frankly, I did not see anything that was any security threat or anything at all. I thought that event went smoothly. And I just thought it was a good event overall and that EHS was able to host it. But to not just say that it didn't go smoothly, but to threaten the students for asking for another event and asking for something that frankly, they have the right to ask for as students and as participating members of this society, is quite literally rude and disgusting. And I think it should be investigated for what Ms. Himmelstein did as something that is not okay for any administrator to do. That is all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Athika Agunja and I'm from East Brunswick, so I'm not from Edison. But I grew up in this area, so I've always looked up to Edison and all the surrounding communities as being very diverse, inclusive, very safe and wonderful places to raise a family. And I decided to raise my own family back in Central Jersey. So we have our own MSA in East Brunswick High School and it's, you know, as all student groups, they're very protected groups, you know? These are places where you have to feel safe with your advisors, with your fellow students. They, they're safe spaces for students, especially after school or especially in a religious setting. You need to feel safe. Like if you're praying in a mosque, you don't want to feel like a bomb is gonna come and kill you, right? So you need to feel safe in our sacred spaces. And this is a religious group as well, so there's extra safety measures that need to be taken in this type of thing and sensitivities. You know, I don't think, you know, this is representative of Edison. Just growing up, for anybody who's not from this area, this is a, this is something that's shocking in our communities and that's why so many people have come out. You know, the other thing I would just say is that mistakes happen. We are all human beings. Everyone makes mistakes on this board up here, in this audience. If the students made mistakes, that's okay. If the administrator even made a mistake, that's okay. What's not okay is not taking accountability for it and saying sorry. It's like a simple sorry. Do you teach your students to say sorry if they make a mistake? Then why don't your administrators just do take that simple step that would have prevented all of this from having to happen? It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. The actions of this board are embarrassing that it has to come to this. That I have to come from East Brunswick to come tell you guys how to how to do it properly. We would be embarrassed in East Brunswick for this to happen and to be in national news. Now, again, people make mistakes. Are you gonna make a mistake in the way that you treat this very sensitive issue? Or are you gonna do the right thing? Because that's what the students are also gonna learn from. They're learning from that administrator and they're learning from all of you. How to solve problems, how to do conflict resolution, how to get along with people, how to be professional. I'm so proud of the students that have talked tonight. I could never do that when I was in high school. Not only that, but like we're dealing with a genocide that affects every single one of us sitting here every single day for the last 10 months. And you guys decided to do this, or your administrator decided to do this during Ramadan, the holiest month of the year for Muslims, where they're fasting for like 12 plus hours, something that probably you guys couldn't even do, some of you guys, because it's so hard. Where is your cultural sensitivity and your racial sensitivity that you're trying to teach these children? Because it doesn't matter what color your skin is sitting up there on the board. It really doesn't. What matters is the decisions that you guys make. That's what we care about, not the color of people's skin. It means nothing to me. There is no room for racism in Central Jersey and I see a lot of it these days. I see it in the back of that room in the corner. When they were talking about this wonderful student, a student, mind you, a minor, a child. When they're talking about students and the values that these students have and the virtues and all good things, I see people in the back corner shaking their head about that. How embarrassing are you as an adult, as a parent potentially? I hope your parents are not just here for, I don't know, that'd be weird. As a parent, as an adult, as a member of this community that children are looking up to, how embarrassing for you to behave that way in public? God knows what you do in private. You all need to protect your trans students, so that bill that's up needs to stay and you need to protect your trans community and trans students. And you need to protect your Muslim students here tonight. And if you fail to do that, know that you are making a mistake and you are the failed administrators, just like the vice principal. So don't make the mistake. Don't teach these children to make more mistakes from adults. They don't need to see bad examples. Like what I saw in the back of that room over there. Shame on them. So we're watching from East Brunswick. We're watching from all over New Jersey. People know about this story all over the country. They'll know about it all over the world. They're watching you. I'm gonna see what you guys do. And this fight will continue if it needs to be. Thank you.
Look at the last speaker. Okay, you can go ahead. And after that, Mr. Ross is the last speaker.
Hello, good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about policy 575. Oh, my name is Jacob Penner. I'm from Rutgers, New Brunswick. I'm here to talk about policy 5756. I'll start by talking a little bit about myself. I've been to school boards all across the state about this policy, all the way from Sussex County, all the way down to Cape May County. I've been to over a dozen meetings regarding policy 5756. I've seen a lot of controversy about it. I've seen a lot of districts repeal it. It is a controversial policy, but let me tell you what's happened in all of the districts that have repealed it. When the students came in that next day, absolutely nothing happened. Because policy 5756 is nothing other than an echo of New Jersey state law. And repealing policy 5756 does absolutely nothing for your students, except telling them that they are not welcome. Except telling students that this policy is there, the wording is there to protect the students. The wording is in our law. So the ambiguity of policy 5756 doesn't tell teachers that they can't tell, talk to parents. Doesn't say anything about that. It just gives the parents, it gives the teachers the options to not talk to those parents. When you remove that policy, what is the next policy in place? New Jersey state law, which says the exact same thing, that teachers have the choice whether or not to talk to those parents based on what those teachers think. So whether or not we have this policy or not, does not affect every day what things go on in that school. It says right here that you're gonna have more input from your board attorney and you're going to have more input for the next meeting. But that costs a lot of money. And in schools, districts where we see their repealing of policy 5756, we see the prices of their board attorney go up in the tens of thousands of dollars. So I'm up here, I'll do it right now for free, what your choices are. Based on my experience in the dozens of school districts. You can, one, leave the policy because the policy is New Jersey state law and repealing it does absolutely nothing. You can just leave the policy because you're not hurting anyone, you're not helping anyone by leaving the policy. You can repeal this policy and you can have a lot more of the people in the corner in the red shirts come out and want to out their their children. You can have all them come out. You can have a lot more of the people behind us come out with the trans flags. We'll all come out, don't worry. You can cause a big controversy that's gonna alienate a lot of your your parents, a lot of your students, make them feel uncomfortable, whether or not you vote on it or not, whether or not you repeal it or not. And at the end of the day, you've done nothing but make your community a lot more uncomfortable. You can change the wording, even though that some board attorneys who get paid by Moms for Liberty will say that you can't edit it. You can edit it. The only thing that you can't do is create a policy that will forcibly out students because that's not allowed in New Jersey. So if you do that, you will get an injunction. But I don't think you're gonna do that. This is only talks about policy 5756. So the people who came up here today and talked about how their teachers are keeping secrets from parents, well, that's what New Jersey state law says. There's one easy solution that every single person in this room, because we all live in the state of New Jersey and we all live in the United States, have. And that's a private school. In a private school, teachers are allowed to do that. Everyone in this room is more than welcome to send their students, if there's any students in this room, they're more than welcome to attend a private school. That's an option that everyone has. But we do go to a public school, this is a public school. So that is why this needs to be put to bed tonight. We need to know that we are not going to spend any more money on board attorney's fees on a policy that has nothing at all. This policy in school today does not do anything because we have New Jersey state law that supersedes this policy. We need to be spending that money instead on a thorough investigation into your administrators who are threatening your students. That's what we need to be spending our money on. The money that you would be spending on your board attorney until this next, this next board meeting where you're not even, doesn't even say on here, you're gonna decide next meeting. This is gonna go on and on and on and on. You're gonna keep going on about this. That money, hire some administrators who actually care about your Muslim students, who care about all of your students. Hire them. Give them a nice bonus. Tell them that the money Tell them that the money that you would have spent on this ridiculous argument over a policy because a handful of people in the corner in red shirts want to out their, their students because of those people, we're gonna spend tens of thousands of dollars or we're going to spend that money protecting our students, protecting every single one of our students. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Hey, good evening. And Mr. Ross, Principal Edison High School. Appreciate the young man bringing up the quote from Malcolm X and I appreciate all the fine words of people saying nice things about me. I think about Dr. Martin Luther King. And he had a statement about hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And I personally choose love. And the people that know me know that after my family, what I love most is the time that I've spent as the principal of Edison High School. Now, those students who know me and the parents that know me know I love my students. And my staff knows that I love them and I love my administrative staff as well. And as another person to quote, Harry Truman said, "The buck stops here." Decisions that get made in the building are at the end my responsibility and I take full accountability for that. One of the benefits of being the principal for so long is that you get to hire so many of your staff. I've hired all four of my assistant principals and I feel that I made great hires because I feel that time and time again, Edison High, the staff, works with the love and works with the community to make this a wonderful place. I'm not gonna discuss anything, obviously, with the investigation. How do I know that Edison High School is a great place? Got bush. How do I know that Edison High School is a great place? By somebody alumni that I see here today. By the product that comes out, by the families that keep deciding to send their kids to Edison Public Schools. And Edison Public Schools, I don't care what anybody from another town says, are some of the best in the state of New Jersey. And I stand by Edison High School as a place where we respect all cultures and where we work every day to make sure that this happens. Now, obviously, there's investigations, there's not gonna be conversations, and I've had some people reach out to me. You know, I welcome a time when in love we come together as a community and we can continue to work forward. But I recognize that as the administrator, I'm the person that makes decisions. And whoever gives them out to the students, in the end, I take accountability for that. And I can't be the principal of Edison High and just accept the cheers and all of the good. But I know what this school is about. I know what the kids are about. I know what my staff is about. I understand the whole community and that forever it's been an aspirational place where people come here for a better life. And generation after generation, all different types of people have always done that. I take this as a sacred calling, what I do every day. And I'm gonna continue to work and I'm gonna continue to stand by my staff and my staff and the community. I know that we will make Edison High a place where everybody is loved. Thank you.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. Besides being Elizabeth Conway, I'm also the chairperson of the PTA PTO Scholarship Fund, which is called in the last few years, the Philip J. Kapalubro Scholarship. Where at this point, we've moved up each year and as of this year, each winner of JP Stevens and each winner of Edison High School are awarded $6,000 in scholarships. I had the names of the students last month at the June meeting. But I just felt there were so many names that were acknowledgement I held off till this month. And the meeting was supposed to be tomorrow night and I was very disappointed because I'm going to the Yankee game tomorrow night. And I found out by pure accident that the meeting was moved to tonight. So I wanted to take the time to acknowledge the two winners because we always talk about Edison being nothing less than excellence. And right now, there's two more excellent students that have just graduated from our high schools. Our Edison High School winner is Maha Khan, who is going to Cornell in the fall to study economics with the ultimate goal of becoming a lawyer. Our winner from JP Stevens is Lakash Nupada, who will be attending the University of Maryland to study aerospace engineering. His career goal is to work for the aerospace. I lost it. I really stink at this. To be an aerospace engineer and push forward our country. And I am so proud of them. I wanted to make it special to show the type of student that goes through our school district. So that's positive. Just one question I do have. I didn't know what was going on tonight. And I'm truly sorry to hear about the goings on. And I feel sorry for anyone that was involved. But I do have a problem that the lawyer did not bring up. When talking about a discussion about an employee of our district, unless that employee in writing gave you permission to use their name during our meeting through the superintendent, I might have come a little late and did not hear it that the person's name should not have been used. Their position maybe, because there are multiple positions. But using the person's individual name without their permission, I truly believe was done completely incorrect. And I'm very disappointed that that took place. But I'm also very disappointed that these children are so upset and they should not be. Thank you.
Motion to end public comments? Motion? Motion? Any second, motion to end public comments?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.